...for the past semester.
So you want to open the public hearing?
Do you have a motion?
You don't need a motion, you just have to think that it's a...
For the acceptance of a gift. Motion's up to you.
Your motion is later in your agenda, so right now is the opportunity for anyone who...
Anyone I'm discussing.
I'd like to comment on this good motion.
So can I open public comment right now or do you guys want to wait?
Oh, open it up.
Okay.
You'll have to close the... If there's no comment on the public hearing, you'll want to close the public hearing.
Open public comment.
All right, then close public hearing and open public comment at four forty seven. If anyone has comment.
Comment on...
Comment on...
What do we commenting on? I don't understand. Just on agenda items.
Commenting on agenda items.
But not literally to your public.
Christina Gardner, two forty three South Main Street. Um, I just wanted to address a concern. So, including yesterday's board retreat, this board has had eleven meetings since May. Of those eleven meetings, this board of five has only had one meeting where every member has attended. So, most of those meetings were special or emergency meetings, which we're then scheduling during times when not all board members can be present for vacation, for work, for all the things. So that's, that's a first concern. So we have eleven meetings and only one do we have five votes that are counted. Um, a recap of what has been accomplished in those eleven meetings since May. May tenth, we accepted a resignation from principal and then we had him leave four days later while still being paid for the rent during the contract. May fourteenth, we had almost three hours of non-public where interviews were held for teaching positions as the board had subsequently changed their policy in previous meetings since the election and wanted to hold their own interviews and we rescheduled presentations from staff. May twentieth, we accepted Tim as the principal, thankfully. Uh, and then we tabled discussion on discipline policy until after the board retreat, which was yesterday. May thirtieth, we accepted nominations, great. June tenth, we questioned the outside agency auditor on various items. We tabled the LEAD program until after the retreat. We tabled the school improvement plan until after the retreat so all members could be present. We limited public comment to thirty minutes and five minutes per person, despite previously changing public comment to five minutes per person with being able to have more time granted to you from others. Also with the original suggestion being unlimited public comment, which was thankfully not moved forward. The board stated they would be drafting a survey that would go out to the community for input on administration, teachers, and staff, and we have yet to receive that survey. We discussed changing the elementary logo back to the Ram, for whatever reason. Policy first rule had been moved since February and needed to be reviewed, and again we tabled it, and it's now on the agenda tonight. June twenty fourth, non-public again for almost three hours. Thankfully, we approved a specialized NECC program, helpful because we removed a lot of the supports with the budget from last year. July second, not quite sure what happened in this special meeting other than accepting a resignation and something in non-public. Um, July eleventh, Title I grant funding approved for curriculum adjustments, most of board was in agreement. Nomination made for a highly qualified preschool teacher who was a Seabrook resident, highly educated, previous experience in that classroom. Nomination was brought forth by a hiring committee to the board. Since only four members were in attendance, they had to vote without a deciding vote. So, we have two members vote yes and two no. This subsequently makes the nomination fail and leaves the school without a preschool teacher to then be relisted and... I don't know what the status of that would be since school starts in way too short of a time. Um, a board member then tries to make a nomination herself for a teacher. Superintendent shares that it is not how the process works. Board member then wants to change policy and question hiring practices. This after the board has already changed hiring practices to include their own interviews instead of sitting on a committee with other staff and community members as we have done for years. July fifteenth, the chair stated that this emergency meeting was called to address staffing needs for the coming year. Staffing needs that the board then created after not accepting a nomination for a teacher. July eighteenth, another hour of non-public to discuss the hiring process per the minutes, and then nothing else was accomplished. And then last night, I was not here, but from updates, doesn't seem like anything was also accomplished. And yet, we do have board members asking for information. We have board members that are asking for numbers, for test scores, for proficiency levels. We have administration offering to give it to them, and then we're subsequently being told no. So, we have a board member asking for the numbers of proficiency scores for other classrooms outside of the third grade going into fourth grade, which third going into fourth, we heard was forty-eight percent. If I'm wrong, please correct me. But forty-eight percent up from thirty-ish maybe? Um, that was the first grade level that had used this program three years in a row. So we've seen, from what the administration has told us in previous years, that it takes three to five years for a curriculum to really be implemented. Now we've seen the fruits of that labor. Forty-eight percent, is it great? No. Is it better than it was? Absolutely. Is that what we're going for? We're going for growth? We're not going for like a magic wand to change everything super quick because it's not gonna happen. We can't beg children to be proficient. We can do everything that we can, we have a solid staff in place. I don't understand why board members are being told no when they want information, but not from the people that are willing to give it to them, but by the chair who says no, we're gonna wait, we're not gonna give these numbers. If I am, as a board, complaining and griping and all things about how the levels are doing, the proficiency levels, the test scores, how awful everything is in Seabrook, why would I not want to prove my point? Because to me, the proficiency scores would be the first thing that I would want that information on. Why would we not put that out to the public? Because, again, if it's information that's proving our point, why are we not sharing it? And if you're not sharing it, to me, there's more to it. Because maybe it doesn't prove the point. Maybe it proves exactly what administration has been talking about this whole time, saying that it takes time to change. And they're doing the things to make the changes, and yet we're not allowing them to change. And I, in the last eleven meetings, the only thing that I see is a lot of chaos. A lot of arguing, a lot of yelling. We have some board members that are trying to keep things focused, they're trying to keep things on track, and yet we keep getting derailed. Tell me in the last eleven meetings what we have done except remove people from positions, um, not accept nominations from a hiring committee, and then push things and table things till the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting. And now we're here and we have an agenda that's seven miles long because we've tabled it from May. So, again, I appreciate those of you that are asking for the information. I appreciate those of you that are fighting to keep things on track. But overall, what we're seeing is a board that is not doing anything except argue and gripe and complain and be disrespectful. And it is really disheartening, and I'm not even a teacher. And I can imagine staff members being inside this building and watching and listening and coming to these meetings over and over and saying the same things that they want to be involved, they want information, they want to help, and nothing is being done. And that's not from administration, that's from the board. And we complain about the SAU, and we complain about all the things that aren't being done, but it seems to me like a lot of people are trying to make things better. They're trying to do things, they're trying to implement new programs, they're trying to get the numbers up, and all we're doing is stocking them at every turn. Every time they bring something, I don't like that. Why? Give us the reasoning. We need to know. Because as a person that is maybe not in the school all the time, I'm not gonna comment on curriculum that I don't understand. If I have concerns, of course, ask the question, get the answers. But I'm not gonna tell administrators and staff that have been doing this for years and years and years and that are inside the building with my kids and everyone else's kids, I'm not gonna tell them they're not right. No, I don't think you should do that curriculum because I heard that it wasn't good. Okay, well, show me the facts because our administration is telling us that it's good, let's try it. Because obviously what we're doing now is working slowly, but before that it wasn't working. So they're trying to do new things. And it is hard to sit back and watch again and again and again the same things and the same stuff being talked about at every meeting, but nothing is ever accomplished. We're going around in circles and we're not doing anything. And that does not build trust. And all we keep talking about and hearing about is transparency and trust from the board, and I'm not seeing any of it. We know that you guys don't trust each other, we know that teachers, I mean that, um, the board and administrators don't trust each other, and it's very easily observed by everyone watching, we can see it. But it's not really instilling much trust in us as the public, as taxpayers, as the people that we're, we're being told that you represent. I don't feel very trusting either. Because every time I turn around, something crazier is happening. Something that I think, no, it cannot get any crazier than what it's hurting. Nope, next one it is, it definitely is, every single time. You are responsible for the school from this level, but unless you are in the school every day, you should not be telling educators and administrators what to do. If you are not willing to be in there to figure out if it's working or not, then you shouldn't have a say. And teachers have invited you, I've heard it, I've been here, they've said, come in the building and see. Come look at my classroom. They're telling you they want to show you the numbers, they want to show you how proficient that their kids are. Their kids can read, okay? Saying they're not, they're not reading, doing all that stuff, it's not working. Go into school and see it for yourself. We're not just talking about seventh and eighth graders, we know that there's problems. We know it. Everybody knows it. We see it, administrators see it, they're making changes to fix it. But again, every second, every meeting, it's something else that the board is inserting themselves into when they should not be. I don't, I, I don't know what else to say, but eleven meetings is not a badge of honor if you don't accomplish anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak up?
So I guess maybe we should discuss the transparency and trust issue. So I think that you guys might want to know that the reason this board has a huge issue with trust and transparency is because since the withdrawal, um, we, this board, there's been things that have gone on that you guys have no idea about. And as much as Christina pointed out, a lot of things I disagree with, I totally agree with her that we've gotten nothing done, and you need to know why we've gotten nothing done. Um, when you have a non-public meeting with legal counsel as a board only, it is not supposed to be recorded. And the SAU twenty-one recorded our non-public meeting with legal counsel. They also made a vote behind our back during a joint board meeting that not one Seabrook resident, uh, board member was there to, to vote on, to check all our, as well as the rest of the SAU board emails to investigate, to do an investigation, and not one of us knew that they went through our emails. So yes, there is a trust issue. Since we've been through this withdrawal, it's been, it's, it's been nothing but short of things that you guys have nothing, have no idea. We also have people in the withdrawal committee that have had conversations with the superintendent and the SAU twenty-one during election and made plans to go into the deliberative where we all sat to change the warning on the warrant article for our social worker. So as much as we all sit here and it looks like that the Seabrook School Board is out of their mind and we can't get along, it's because we have sat back and we have tried so hard to get that link on the fifteenth of the meeting where we were told there was no audio on the sixteenth, yet on the twenty-fourth, there was a ninety-one A requested by the chair to see the link, and all of a sudden, we find out that the meeting was recorded in a non-public. That teacher that was doing an exiting interview doesn't even know she was recorded. We, as a board, fought so she would have the right to know, and then all of a sudden, she no longer was being hired. Now regardless if there was audio, the bottom line is, is when you record somebody illegally at a room where they're supposed to be under the understanding that they are not supposed to be recorded, that is a law. So I am making a motion right now that this board immediately looks into getting legal counsel immediately for this board that is independent from the SAU twenty-one because of the legal counsel we have right now is not working. So I make that motion, we get legal counsel independently for the Seabrook School Board currently.
Who pays for that?
We pay anyway, and right now, we're paying legal counsel to represent the SAU twenty-one with our money. So we pay for that, we already have a budget of, of legal counsel money. Does anybody want to second or no?
Oh, I'll second, yeah. I'll look into a new legal counsel.
On a favor?
We'll need a roll call vote.
Okay.
Um, Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
So it's upper discussion first, right?
Yeah, definitely.
Sure.
The idea is to find, like, is this motion binding or we're getting a new legal counsel looking into...
I think it's just we're looking into finding new legal counsel.
That's not my motion I change, okay? My motion is, is that we get new legal counsel. We've, we've been trying so hard to work with the legal counsel we have, and it's not necessarily that he's incompetent, it's that he had, it's too much of a conflict of interest. He has, he, he's a great legal counsel, Seabrook's used him for a long time, but unfortunately, I have the feeling he's in a situation where it's, he's in a situation.
Kelly, can you clarify what you would like the motion to read?
I'd like to make a motion that we seek legal, we seek independent legal counsel for the Seab, town of Seabrook, I mean, the Seabrook School Board.
Again, I'd like to know how that is getting paid for.
It would be the same as, we, we're, we're just, her motion basically, George, is that we would just replace the current legal counsel with new legal counsel. So it'd be the same.
So the current legal counsel though is being paid by the SAU, right, which you're going to pay in...
No, it's being paid by us. It's us, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Guys, someone wants to do that?
Oh, I'll second, sorry.
We already had a second, I see we're onto discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I change my motion.
Any more discussion? Okay, so roll call, Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Um, Maria?
Yes.
So the vote is three yes, one no.
Did you hear the vote, Maria?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure you, I don't want...
Forgot Lacy.
I didn't want you to be misled.
I will admit I did, but I do not mean a yes, I don't say in time.
Lacy, yes. So the vote is four yes, one no.
Okay.
So what happens if that fee is more than what you're currently paying?
Kelly, can I, um, say something before we go any further?
Sure.
Because I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be saying this or not, but I have honest ideas and I see myself and I see the board and I see Meredith clapping hands and saying, here comes a typical Kelly Blaine game. I say, I'm really about all the times this board, this employees, concur to you all.
This is absurd. This is absurd.
I'm actually gonna stop you on this one.
This is absurd.
I'm writing right across from Meredith and she hasn't...
And I am the right thing I'm saying, I don't know, and it says have fun damn taxpayers, I don't know if I'm supposed to be in here.
She must do something else, but she's not explaining. Maria, what do you mean? Because when, where, what do you mean?
Yeah, and I see Meredith and maybe a staff member and I see her comments and clapping hands and those same Kelly Blaine games and...
You're not, you're, you're wrong.
So, well, just get the screenshot of it because I don't see anything like that, I don't know. Well, maybe not, but maybe you should just take a picture of that and Willie can look into it later.
We don't need a picture, we can see her.
I think she's talking about, she's talking about chat. And she's not in the meeting. I know, I'm just telling you, she's just saying she saw her on chat, that's what she's saying. All right, anyway.
What's on, is she on YouTube?
She's on YouTube. She's on YouTube.
All right, let's move on.
Kathy, did you hear what Deanna just said?
Yeah, she's on YouTube.
It's the chat on Reddit.
Why is she on YouTube?
Order, order, we got stuff to get done. We're trying to get things done.
Yeah, we definitely need to get things done, we're gonna. All right, so now we are going to go to the public comment still open?
Yeah.
I'm Dorian McCuster, I live at sixty-six Marshview Circle, and I'm a teacher here at school. I would like to know if this attorney costs more than what you're paying now, where those funds will come from.
So we don't, we don't know, we just made the motion, so we'll have to actually go out and look, and that will definitely be considered. Or, I mean, I can only speak for myself, but I would not hire an attorney for a larger fee than what we are already paying.
We do need to audit and see what's been paid for that so far.
And my second point is, the distrust came way before the withdrawal committee. I'm a teacher, I know that I personally have not had trust in this board since before the withdrawal committee. So, in my case, I'll talk about myself, that was not a true statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lekowski, kindergarten teacher and also resident in town. Um, I can ask a question, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna direct my question to Kelly, if you don't mind, just because it's in reference to last night. I kind of wanted to ask the question, but it got so late and I just felt like everybody wanted to be done, so. When you were talking about, um, you know, children, let's say, for example, they're in fifth grade, but they're working at a third grade level, we had a lot of discussion about that. One of my questions that would help me as a teacher to understand where it's coming from is, I'm just curious, do you feel that that issue, a child in that circumstance, the issue is because of the education that been provided here?
No.
You believe there's other factors?
Yes, there could be other factors, but I definitely think it has a lot to do with the structures of the classroom, not meaning the way that they're set up, and that has nothing to do with the teachers or the learning, it's the way it's set up in the classroom, and the teachers don't determine how the classrooms are set up. So that's what I'm thinking. So in other words, if you have a level of students, and if you, we've talked about this before, if you have students in the classroom that are really high, um, meaning that they're more advanced, and then you have the students that are more like average, and then you have students that are struggling. If they're all in the same classroom, the teacher isn't able to, and the teachers have told me this, this isn't my opinion, this is what teachers have said, that they feel like that it's difficult for them because the students that are advanced, they're having a hard time in the classroom because they're not able, they're bored, they're waiting for the teacher to help the students that maybe are struggling. And then there's also been, there's been a lot of distractions in the classrooms, and students that technically would be able to sit in the classroom with students on the same level with them and get the extra help, or the students that are advanced, they're not really thriving or they're not getting the advanced help that they need because there's too much going on in the classroom. I don't think it has to do with the education of the school. I think it has to do with, um, just how we have our classroom structured and how Seabrook, Seabrook's set at a different standard, not a teacher's.
Okay, um, I, I won't get into a back and forth about it, but I, I, one more part. Do you feel there's outside factors?
I do.
That contribute?
I do, but not, I don't feel like that's the reason for every case. Because we have students in the school, that would be our top test, like, the ones that would test the highest, and they're still only testing average compared to the other schools. So when they leave here in eighth grade, they're thinking, they're one of our top testers, but then when they get to Wanacunet, and I know this for a fact, so I've talked to teachers at Wanacunet, when they get to Wanacunet, they're put into advanced classes, and it isn't long before they realize that they have to move down a couple of classes because they're not ready. Where the other kids are, yet here, they look as though they're one of our top testers, and that's a fact. It's in math class and in reading, special math.
Certainly not all of our children, that's not the case.
Most of them that go there to, into an algebra class, that are advanced algebra, most of them end up, the parents end up saying that they were shocked because their kid was excited to be in those classes and just could not handle them. The ones that have spoken to me.
If there's other outside factors that you believe could be contributing to this, children struggling, what would you say some of those factors are?
It could definitely be that parents are not available to the students because maybe they're working. It could be that there are parents that are not available to the students because maybe they have other things going on that are personal, whether it is demographics. But the bottom line is, is that we need to do the best we can to bring these kids to align with all the other schools, and that hasn't been done until yesterday. That has never, there's never ever been one conversation of lining, aligning our school with the other schools. It's always been, they're not in the same demographics as the other schools. Instead of saying, you know, we, we do, we have to do the best we can to align them with the other schools, that's never been said, not at a meeting. Because for four years, we were saying that and we were told, there's demographics that come into play, they're not the same as the other schools.
Okay, I'll just end by saying one thing. I, I really appreciate your response because it's been hard for me as a teacher to kind of understand where it's coming from. Um, I would agree with what everyone said, you really do need to come in and see what's happening.
Okay, yes. Yes, you can comment.
Hi, um, I think that was Laura, as good as I can see her. Um, well, I just wanted to say from the board, from me as the board chair, sorry I'm not there tonight, but I want to say to you, we have a great administration in place. We have our staff ready to go, and whatever those reasons are, we're hopeful that our professionals, meaning you included, are gonna come back and have all these answers to go forward, and I just wanted to say that, and thank you.
Thank you, Maya.
Hi, Rebecca Sherbonne, eighth grade, um, teacher, I'm just gonna be really brief for a moment. Um, last night, you graciously... Um, last night, you graciously offered Kelly an opportunity to have, um, public comment at the end.
Sure.
Too, I was wondering if, seeing how long this is, if there are any questions, if we might be able to have that option, um, at the end? I'm asking the board if they would be so willing to maybe open that up if there is anything. Do we have a non-public, maybe? I mean, public, a public comment in the end, sorry.
We do have, I think we do have something on the non-public agenda, but I don't think it'll, it'll take too long.
Do we have a meeting with the union today in non-public?
I don't know, the board did not reply to that, I don't know what you think.
We did receive a yes.
We did.
Oh, I agree.
Well, I did not receive a.
Three twenty-seven.
Kelly, we do.
Okay.
And Rebecca answered that on that, and, um, yeah.
I just mean, as a teacher, like, because there are so many things, if there are any questions at the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll probably still gather opportunity to, to ask a question or give a comment, thank you so much. In regards to what is on the agenda tonight, um, it's definitely a big chunk of things to go through and I just ask as a teacher who has been part of some of the planning and a lot of my colleagues over in.
As a teacher, like, because there are so many questions again?
It's you two.
Is it here or yourself?
Yeah. It's over here. Sorry, um, I had no idea what I was just saying. Oh, if you would please consider, um, the fact of the hard work that the teachers have put into the planning of the school improvement plan, um, ask questions, we're happy to give you the answers on it, if there are any, um, areas that we can improve on, great, but just don't, just don't fail to consider the fact that we've put so much hard work into a lot of these plans and a lot of these initiatives, in and of essence to what you've requested from us, so. I know that I personally sometimes feel defeated when we work so hard on things and then they get sort of thrown out. So, I guess my request is that when you do go through all of the SIP plans and the student handbook and everything, just know that it's all coming from a place of people who are on-ground level, seeing it every single day, have been seeing it for years, know the issues that go on in the building and it's, it's been a really thoughtful process. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, also try to be fairly quick, Dawn Raymond, seventh grade language arts, um, also a former student here. Um, I just have to say that, um, test scores don't always equate to success in the classroom. Um, I have students that will score proficient and then they may go to eighth grade, ninth grade, tenth grade, and they will struggle in the classroom. Um, as much as we are trying to focus on data and really, um, work on showing improvement, we're also not just trying to create a room full of robots that are just test takers. So we're trying to create all-around students that can sit and have healthy discussions, get along with peers, get along with teachers, and, um, learn other skills. So, um, I do appreciate what you're saying and I do respect that, but I just think that having a really high test score doesn't necessarily mean that that student will then be successful in the following grade and through Seabrook's work with Portrait of a Learner, we were able to talk to students on a panel and see interviews from students saying what they need to be successful when they leave this whole district into college, and it was not just a panel of Seabrook students, it was students from every single school saying what they need, and there are students from the high school that will go into college and will feel very much unprepared, but it's not just all Seabrook students. So I just wanted to make it clear is that we're showing great gains in the data, which you haven't been able to see yet, hopefully that will be remedied soon. Um, but again, that, that's not always going to equate to what you hope to see in class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Angie Butter special, um, typically, if I was going to approach the board or have any kind of conversation tonight, I would have prepared it, but something just sparked for me, that I think it's important enough that even if I'm not as eloquent as I'd like to be, that I take a moment to, to share something. Something was said last night, Christina sparked something for me, as did Rebecca and Dawn, and that is, um, when we're talking about trust and transparency, I think the number one reason that we're feeling, we're all feeling the way we are is, please keep in mind that these teachers, most of us, when we were eighteen years old, decided this is what we wanted to do. We've spent from the time we were eighteen-ish until now, and look at us, we're all old.
I win, I win.
So we've been at school a long time, we have a lot of experience, we have a lot of knowledge, and one of the things that we are taught over and over in school is that you don't make decisions about kids and about programming unless it's science-driven, data-driven, research-based, peer-reviewed. So our processes are very carefully conscientious in intention. When we're tasked with, when I get a phone call and say, will you be on a committee for a hiring committee and give up your time in the evening or give up your time in the summer, I say yes, because it's important. And then, as a group, I trust my peers, I trust administrators that are leading it, and we very carefully follow a process. We, when we then come here with the end result and you go, nah, which is what it feels like to us, I'm sure there's a lot more to it, but you need to know that's what it feels like to us, then what you're saying is that you don't trust us in the work that we're doing. When somebody says, we wanna reset room, I say, I wanna see the research that supports that. The experience we all have with a planning room was that it was not effective. It had the opposite effect on our students, because most kids, especially kids with any kind of behavior issue, would much rather be on a one, in a one-on-one situation. And one of the reasons they're acting up is in hopes of that. I think our administrators would support that, because when they get kiddos in their office that are acting up, one of the things that they've sought is that one-on-one attention. Um, and so we give it to them, we figure it out, we try to be more proactive and give it to them in advance, but that's what they're looking for. And so we've gotta do something different, not just give it to them so that they're pulled out of class. Again, that's a whole research thing, that if we're gonna make a decision and make this big change, I implore you to look at what research says about things like that. And then finally, same thing, leveling classes, we know that's, I'm not gonna go too deeply on this because it really, as, as a behavior person, I've spent the last fourteen years in this district, mainly focused on behaviors, and I will tell you that it would break my heart, literally could bring me to tears now, to imagine some of the kids that I've worked with who absolutely act out because some of the stuff they just can't do. If we started saying, all of you go to this room, well, you go to this room. I have emotional feelings about that, but that shouldn't drive the decision. What should drive the decision is what works for kids, not just academically, but what builds confidence. What helps kids to feel good about coming to school? Because I don't care what the teacher's teaching, if they don't have the confidence to attend in class, they're not gonna learn. And in my, no, not in my opinion, research would bear out that doing something like that will not help out our test scores and it will not build confidence and it will not make us a better school.
Kathy Gayham, Loma Grove, um, so as a parent, my only issue, obviously, is the proficiency is, um, I would just say, like, what are we doing about those students that are, and going into eighth grade, at a fifth grade level? Because I love that, that improvement in the elementary school, and that's awesome, and I applaud you for that. But what are we doing for the kids in the seventh grade and eighth grade that, they, they are at a fifth grade level? So I'm sorry, but my, my eighth grader isn't prepared for eighth grade math. I can tell you right now, she's coming to you, Mr. Felch, get her a piano, because Riley is not, but, um, I'm paying seventy-five dollars an hour for a tutor to help her twice a week. But, like, I wanna know what are we doing about them? Because they are gonna sit in your class, and my child's not the only one, I can tell you that my whole group of cheerleaders that are from Seabrook, and I'm not trying to even say that one school's different than the other, but there is a significant difference. I showed my Hampton girls the math that Riley's doing with her tutor, and they know how to do it. But Riley just won't, and neither does any of her Seabrook friends know how to do the math that she's doing, and it's not seventh or eighth grade math. They don't know how to do it, so I just wanna know, like, how are you guys gonna reach them in the levels that they're coming into? Because that's my concern, I don't want my child sitting in Mr. Felch's class and be like, completely lost. That's a waste of her time.
Catch him up.
I don't want her to come back to school.
Catch him up.
Completely lost. Same thing with Riley, she's gotta do three years of language. I loved English, that was my strong. Riley, like, and, and I remember you saying at one of the meetings last year, and I can attest to this, that I had eighth graders on my coach, on my team, that they struggle with sentence structuring. An eighth grade, that's a wicked problem, and I, that's my kid too. She can't make a composition that she'd be ready to present in high school, no way, and will she be at the end of this year? I mean, I hope so, but it's not looking great. So I wanna know, sorry, well, that's what I mean, so, and I'm just, you know, I'm seeing all the grades that are behind. What are we doing for the majority of kids that are behind going into their current grade levels? So leveling doesn't work, okay, that's fine, what does? Because that's what we need to fix, what does work for the ones that are already behind? Because they are behind. I can tell you right now, I have Riley's peers from Seabrook who don't know a state from a country. Okay, and they're going into eighth grade. They don't know a state from a country. The Hampton kids do, because they know the song, I don't know where the song was lost, but somewhere along the line, Seabrook didn't learn the song, my child doesn't know the state song, the Hampton kids do, they can recite the states. Hey, that works, that works. My kid could learn the song and learn all the states if she could learn math, multiplication by a song, that'd be awesome. Because they don't even wanna multiplication facts anymore. And then math is a whole struggle, so I just wanna know, like, I sympathize with you and I appreciate all of you, a lot of you have had all of my other kids. So, I'm not against you, I, I just wanna know what are we doing for them? Because I'm scared, I won't even say it, but I'm scared for my child to go to one o'Conne, I'm very scared. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can speak to that, about eighth grade, what happens. Um, in eighth grade when we have, Rebecca Sherbon, um, language arts. In eighth grade when we notice that we have students who are deficient, we look at their data, we look at three points of data and then we can, and I'm just speaking to eighth grade because I'm not familiar with what happens in the other grades, although I would guarantee that it's a very similar process. Uh, we look at three points of data and then we discover the areas where they are most in need of gains. And then we custom tailor groups during, uh, period of time during the day where they have hand-tailored custom lessons to pigeonhole the areas of deficiency. And then typically that's a six to eight week process, but if they're not making that progress that we want to see, we, we keep them again, and then maybe we'll, we'll pigeonhole, we'll find another skill that they really need help in gaining proficiency on, and then we'll tackle that, and as an eighth grade team, there are five of us who are focused on ELA and math. It's typically three teachers who focus on math, not me, you're welcome. And then two who will focus on ELA, and then we're also looking into, at that same point, giving those kids leadership opportunities, which is, we kind of weave that into our advisory in the mornings, like, the kids who are having a great opportunity in math to be leaders to their peers, like, that's an awesome period of time where we can remediate those things as well. So we are, as an entire staff, hugely focused, but it's such a, it's such a weird way that we do it. We'll walk you through it, we'll walk anybody through it. We will walk anybody through it, um, but we do, we look at the data. Sure, absolutely, I just want you to have a first, firsthand answer, thank you for your time.
Okay, Kelly, did I say something, it was that Rebecca?
Yes.
I'm a little bit delayed on here, sorry. Um, I just wanted to say, what she's saying is being done, is that for the eighth grade or for all of them?
All grade, all grades, all students.
Well, she said she could only speak for the seventh, eighth grade.
It's all, everybody grade.
Okay, well, she said, I'm just telling them what she said, she said that she can only speak for her grade, so she was referring to her grade.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, and I just wanted to commend Kathy for speaking, because you are right, and we are working hard to find out what we're gonna do to scoop these kids up that are so far behind in the middle school. And thank you for speaking on that.
Hi, I just Karen, I just had a couple of questions, and again, I don't need responses, obviously, today, but I think I appreciate the sort of additional transparency about some of the things that is kinda getting in the way of the board kinda doing their day-to-day kinda operational work in terms of like strategic oversight of the, you know, the schools and things like that, um, and the need to potentially have another lawyer, um, to kinda do that work. I think, um, in hearing all of that, right, again, that's super insightful for me, but I'm also curious how the board will balance, like, all of that with the day-to-day work that has to happen. Um, so again, I think that's insightful, but I, I still am not quite understanding why we couldn't take anything off of yesterday's agenda, um, even with that kind of, you know, important and helpful context that, that was shared with us today. I, I also hope that the board can really think through how to work effectively with these dedicated educators who are showing up time and time again for hours at a time to really think through, like, what is the agreed-upon progress level every single year? Um, because if we don't agree, this turns into an argument every single year around, well, our kids aren't at grade level, but I hear educators saying, well, good lord, twenty percent or, or fifteen percent is like something we're high-fiving about and then we're coming to the board and we're getting yelled at. Um, and so I just think we're at, we're at a pivotal time, right? I, I think, I, I, I hear all of the comments that are being made and frankly, I agree with everyone in public comment and I appreciate that everyone was able to do that today, um, without interruption, because I think that that's really, really important. Um, but, but I, I just implore the board and the administrators to agree upon, what is the increment? We, I think no one's denied the kids are behind, but what is the agreed-upon progress for next year? So we're not at odds and yelling at each other because we're not at grade level. Because I think what I heard yesterday loud and clear, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, it's likely not gonna happen next year, and we need to have productive conversations about what is the plan we all agree on and how are we gonna review back to make sure that that progress didn't in fact happen? So, so what I'm looking for as a taxpayer is, what is the percent proficient we want next year, knowing where we are this year? What is fair and reasonable and possible, knowing that, I'm seeing a group of administrators who are coming on their days off, they are dedicated, they are here to show up for us, and I want everyone here to keep showing up for us, because my kid needs it, and so does all of her friends. And what I'm hearing from them is they're not feeling supported by the board because they're working really, really hard. And I don't think it's that the board doesn't wanna hear them, I think that we haven't agreed upon how we're gonna share the data in a systematic way that says, yes, we did it, let's congratulate each other, let's have a meeting where we high-five and we say, we collectively did it, our kids got twenty percent higher, and that's bananas, that should be impossible. We are the underdog and we did that. And that is how I wanna flip these meetings for our community and for our school board and for these teachers who show up in such a dedicated way, and I'm watching them, and I, they're all in alignment. They're all in alignment, they get it, they know what they need, they know what they want. And I want them to feel heard and respected and valued, and that we continue to cheer them on, because the level of work they have to do is unparalleled to any other school in our community, and I recognize that and I value that, and I thank them all. I think the teachers who shows up to my kids' softball teams, because they know that matters to so many other kids. Teachers who came in early and then they're out till eight o'clock at night with my kid, twenty minutes away. I love them, they are so important to my kid, they've been so instrumental for her development, and I just want us all to walk away from these meetings feeling good, and I think we can all do that if we all take steps to look forward together, and I think it starts with, what are the goals? What is feasible and agreed upon and what will happen moving forward, but again, I hear the board, there is a lot that's been taken on that needs to get addressed and how do we balance that with all of this day-to-day stuff so that we don't show up to meetings where agendas have been moved, because rightfully so, there's so much work to be done that it couldn't be done. You all are paid a time stipend from our taxpayers, it's not equitable to the number of hours that you all do. So I'm here to be a partner to say, how do we work smarter and not harder, because the number of meetings that happened with the outcomes that we had, right, I don't think anyone's feeling great about that. I don't think anyone's feeling great about that, and I think we'd all rather be better prepared for this school year. So, you know, I'm gonna keep showing up, I'm gonna keep being an ally to folks, I'm gonna keep sharing my opinion because I think that we need to hear from all sectors of our community and not just particular sectors of it. I think everyone's voice needs to carry a collective, you know, sort of, uh, weight here. Um, and so I, that is my hope, again, that we are looking at what are specific goals that we know are attainable and achievable, so we can continue to gain momentum and build that trust. Cause that's not gonna happen if we don't do that. Um, I want everyone to care, get along, and feel great about the work that we're doing, and I recognize that is not happening today. I don't think for anyone at this table collectively. Um, so I, I look forward to being an ally as we enter into the new school year, to think through how we better do that because collectively, we all owe this responsibility, um, and our kids, they need it. Um, and I don't think anyone wants to sit through a three-hour meeting where nothing gets done, right? And it's not for lack of effort, I think everyone is trying really, really hard. So, thank you.
Alright, so a close, uh, public comment at five twenty-four. And I'll move on to super, uh, approval of minutes.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, um,
Do the first two together.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May fourteenth and May twentieth.
I second. Jen, you were up to.
Yeah, I was. For the twieth?
The fourteenth, I'm gonna choose.
No, I think I came in late on the twentieth. Yeah, four oh nine.
Alright, so.
So let's just do them individually then.
Go through the twentieth.
Roll call for the May fourteenth. Lacy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
abstained.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes. Yes.
Yep. Make a motion to approve the minutes from May twentieth.
We actually have to have the twentieth changed, cause they have to put Jen does not be present.
Well, yeah.
It is in the.
They can just sit out, it's just on the.
Alright, that's okay. I'll second.
And roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the June tenth meeting.
Second.
Jen, did you second?
Yes.
Thank you. And roll call, Lacy?
Abstained.
Kelly?
Oh, they have you absent. From June tenth?
Yeah, it has you absent.
They have you absent.
Abstained.
No motion?
So, fine.
He can still make the motion.
Oh, okay.
So we have Lacy?
Abstained.
Yep, I was up there.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick?
Abstained.
Maria?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the minute, special meeting minutes, June twenty-fourth.
I'll second.
Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Uh, Kelly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Abstained.
Maria?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes for July second.
I'll second.
Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Abstained.
Maria?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we approve the July eleventh meeting.
Second.
Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Jen?
Abstained.
Kelly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Abstained.
I'll make a motion to accept the July fifteenth minutes. I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Abstained.
Patrick?
Abstained.
Maria?
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to accept, um, the July eighteenth minutes.
Second.
Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Abstained.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
So primarily, we just finished our admin retreat in the last two days, so thank you to our administrators for their dedication and hard work in that. We spent a lot of time yesterday talking about our, our work moving forward and, um, school improvement plans, sharing those, um, across the board. And we spent not much of today talking about supervision and evaluation and our work as an administrative team to support teachers in doing their best work for kids. So I appreciate their work. Um, new teachers arrive next week, the nineteenth and twentieth are their first two days, and we'll do a welcome to them at the high school on the nineteenth. You all are welcome to join us for coffee, um, that morning. Opening day for all staff will be next. They all come back on Wednesday, and then we hold our SAU-wide day on Thursday this year. And then our students start school on the twenty-eighth. Also incorporated in your report, we, we've changed up the format a little bit because, um, Dr. Castle, who has, um, in a sense, taken Dr. Hobbs' role, although not, uh, not in its entirety, but Dr. Castle will be coming on a regular basis to board meetings across the SAU. Uh, but she just shared a note about her work kinda settling in and, um, meeting with folks in all of the buildings. Um, and also spoke about a math partnership that, um, with the community colleges that she is working on in conjunction with some folks at the high school. And we're, um, hoping there may be some extensions with Great Bay Community College to, um, Seabrook Middle School as well, moving forward. And then Dr. Tumi just submitted, um, a little explanation of the extended school year program, and you'll hear more about that and, um, Seabrook's specific program from, uh, Kristen in a little bit. And then, um, and you may hear from her as well, our special education directors across the SAU also have just returned from, um, their summer academy, which is a learning opportunity and had a chance for them to, um, understand any changes to special education law, meet with attorneys, meet with other people doing their job, um, around the state of the country, so some valuable learning opportunities for them. And then I just wanted to respond to Kelly's comments, and I certainly appreciate that, you know, the board should certainly seek different counsel if it's not satisfied with the counsel it's receiving. Um, but I would say to the extent that the board makes, wants to make public accusations about near the SAU, that if you have a concern, you should do an investigation. Um, and instead of just launching accusations, um, that's, I think, the appropriate way that we handle, um, conflicts and concerns. And I would encourage you to.
We're being, I'm being honest.
And, and I would encourage you to, to do a full investigation if, if those are your concerns.
Yep, we already did when they were turning.
Erin, if I can just give a shout out, I know that, uh, Christian is gonna speak about the wonderful ESY program that we just concluded here at Seabrook. I was involved in, um, helping to plan, uh, as Christian was settling in our ESY program here this year, and I'm just very grateful to the staff. I just wanna, you know, publicly say thank you to the incredible staff that we have here at Seabrook, um, for their hard work, for their willingness to, um, you know, chip in and make a really wonderful program so that our children with identified disabilities don't regress over the summer and have every opportunity to succeed. Um, they were outstanding. The learning showcase was wonderful. We had lots of parents here coming to see the great work that their kids did over the four weeks. And, um, glad that we could put some books in their hands to take home, and happy that we were able to, um, also arrange, uh, the field trip. So, um, in addition to the teachers and the, uh, EAs who are incredible, shout out to Christian and to Lauren, who also stepped in and really did a lot with the summer programs here at Seabrook. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So I guess that's a good segue. I, um, would also like to thank Christian and Lauren. Christian really just dove right into ESY and hit the ground running. Um, had a lot of thoughtful planning on Lauren's behalf before Christian was onboarded, um, so thank you both. It was definitely a successful, um, ESY program this year. We had almost a hundred kids. Um, a field trip to Seaco Science Center, and I don't know if you have a report, I don't wanna steal all of your, uh. But ultimately, this summer, we had some hiring, um, so we're excited to welcome our, our new school nurse, Tammy Thibodeau. Um, we hired Nicole Fermanni as a, a fourth grade teacher, Liz Woolley as well, to teach fourth grade. Um, a big welcome to Colleen West, our new assistant principal at Seabrook Elementary, who has also hit the ground running. She's just been phenomenal. She's coming from Bedford. Um, in, in talking of proficiency, a school that, correct me if I'm wrong, had ninety-eight percent proficiency. Um, and so we're really looking to bring those high expectations here, uh, for our kiddos as well. We did things a little differently this year. We didn't have a step-up day at the end of the year, where kids went home for the summer knowing their teacher. It became kind of an organizational mess when it comes to kids move in and move out, and we have to shuffle kids around, and a number of other reasons. So we sent class placement letters, uh, a little over a week ago, so those should be home. If you haven't received one, or you know somebody that has not received one, uh, encourage them to reach out to the school, and we will certainly get them that information. And then last, um, an update on the NEC program, and that's something, again, I don't know, Christian, if you're planning on talking about that, but we have, we're excited to introduce the NEC program, which is the New England Center for Children. And they specialize in working with students with autism spectrum disorder. And so we're really excited to bring their expertise to help our students succeed here at Seabrook Elementary. Um, and so that's gonna be ready to go, and a big shout out to Mary and her help and her team for helping make that happen as well, and the board's approval of that program. So we're excited to have that underway. Think that's it?
Thank you.
Hello, uh, the picture you saw was some of the school, the kids holding bunnies. Um, even middle school kids like to play with bunnies, so that was, um, a lot of fun that I sent you, even though, um, not a bunny fan, but they were. And I also welcome to stack, so we, welcome Savannah Segman, who actually happened to be in the audience, who'd been doing health. Erin Dickerson, who moved from the PEAK program to a case manager. Sarah Brown was an EI at the elementary side, she's gonna move to the middle school. Obviously, welcome Christian, and thank God Josh, who's a new AP. Uh, really techy, which makes me really happy, and I'm learning new things with him every day. I know how to put an ink, water print. Water marquee. Uh, really happy about that. And we painted. I, I love a fresh coat of paint. I think we never showed up facilities, so, um, some people might not like sea foam green, but I think it's a really calming color to have. Uh, so the teacher's room is painted, some classrooms, some hallways, a little hello, the fifth grade pod. Uh, cause we can't wait for those fifth graders to come. So we still painting. These guys are killing themselves, and women as well, but it's just women, they're a little bit cleaner. Um, so, the floors, the classroom, we have a new roof, thank you, we're very happy about that. Um, Lauren's gonna talk about summer programs, so I'm not gonna take her a little, uh, shore. And, uh, teachers get PD, they planned, uh, thank you to the board for piloting Wit and Wisdom. They're working hard, and we can't wait to show you those results.
I don't need to go out of time, but are we supposed to, uh, accept this donation? This. Oh, okay, sorry.
Director, one director?
Sure. Um, yeah, yeah.
That, well, that was just informational, because it's below the five hundred dollar threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, I just shared in there that we had so many staff members from both buildings, elementary and middle, twenty-two elementary staff, eleven middle school staff, that wrote proposals for summer work and worked this summer. So I just wanna give a huge shout out. This is something that they've done each summer to prepare with new initiatives, new curriculum. We've had, you know, work on math progressions, we've had Wit and Wisdom work, we've had teachers collaboratively working together, integrating units. We've had whole teams looking at parts of their curriculum together. Um, all of that documentation is sent to the administrative team, we all have access to that. And we, you know, we kind of collaborate with them on, on their, their growth, and all of that is for the best of our students. So I really wanna give a shout out to our teachers. Um, just kind of a couple of things for professional development as we head into the year. We're gonna continue our work with Sarah Sharilla. She's our literacy consultant we've had for the past two years. She's gonna really support our science of reading and our implementation of Wit and Wisdom. She also does coaching for the elementary teachers and middle teachers, um, and that's been very successful in part of, you know, part of them opening their classrooms and being really willing to learn, and I really, again, appreciate the teachers doing that. Um, I welcome you to, um, come join that science of reading introduction on August twenty-seventh. There's plenty of seats. Um, if you wanna come and listen to it, it's short, it's about less than an hour. Where she can just give some background on how, how students, how children learn to read. So I think that's something that the whole entire staff from both buildings is gonna, is gonna be part of that. Excited for us to have some common language as we move forward. You know about the Wit and Wisdom launch, thank you so much for supporting that. I think it's exciting work as, as, um, as we've just heard from, from Colleen and Tim, um, as well. So I think it's something across both buildings that's gonna be able to bring us together. Those two through eight teachers are gonna collaborate together, so again, it's another way we're bridging the two buildings, so excited for that. We're gonna have a professional book study this year. It's called, um, Mindset, The New Psychology of Success. It's Carol Dweck. I linked her TED Talk there. It's really about some of the things that was, that we mentioned from teachers at the podium, that were growing whole, whole, whole children, um, that have a mindset that they can solve problems and learn and grow. So I think that, that'll fit in nicely with our, with our goals. Grant update, we had a, a successful Title One summer school. As, as we mentioned, we had eighty to eighty-five kids here every single day, um, for the Title One program, which is separate from the ESY program. It's four weeks in July. And again, shout out to the, to the families who made that commitment to get their kids out of bed in the summer, and get them here on a bus or in cars or however, and participate, all those students, I think that those numbers are fantastic. Did have a farm for fun, but also to integrate learning, um, into their classrooms. And we also integrated with our children's librarian from Seabrook Public Library. So shout out to Amanda Allard for, she's our new children's librarian at Seabrook. She was here every Thursday, reading, uh, to children K through four. So we look forward to more collaborations with her. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm actually gonna speak.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, so, first of all, I have to say, uh, it's been a wild, uh, month and a half. It's been great. There are many more things I probably could've included in this update as I listened to everybody, so I apologize. I was getting my feet under myself, but these will be a little, uh, beefier, uh, as we move forward. But, um, I have to say, and I think I've said it to everybody that would listen to me, that coming in, in July to be here for summer school was probably the joy of my summer. Um, the program was set up very well by everybody that did all the work before I arrived. I, it's great that people are thanking me, but honestly, all I did was show up and say hello and greet kids and meet staff, and, which was, for me, the best thing to do, but the organization was done, uh, way prior to me being here. I loved meeting all of our students, uh, getting to learn some of their names, uh, meeting the families, the parents that would drop them off, connecting with some of the school bus drivers as they were dropping the kids off, all the staff that I got to meet, and, and memorize names for, and, um, see every day, and see what they get to do with kids every day. That was so awesome. I spent most of my time in classrooms, uh, when, when summer school wasn't session. It was a great time. We had forty-eight students that were enrolled. Uh, the programming was for a total of forty-two hours. Students were, I just have to say, uh, just a shout out to Erica McMahon, uh, one of the special ed teachers. The very first day I was in there, I think it was maybe thirty minutes after, uh, ESY had started, and she was already like, kids had books open, we were doing some math. It was just like, it was like, we were rocking and rolling from the very start. So, um, it was fun. Thanks for everybody for, uh, putting up with me as I was running around and then, uh, seeing I was gonna be places and then forgetting I was supposed to be there and all the things, but, um, it was great. Um, and these will, there are so many things I could've spoken to, like NEC and, um, the other things that were happening. Just, uh, yeah, it's been lots of learning. So, thank you. And these will, there are so many things I could have spoken to, like NECC and the other things that were happening, it just, yeah, it's been lots of learning, so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Matt, finance report.
Thank you, so I have included the fiscal year day expenditure report on the board docs. We are only a month into the fiscal year, so many, you'll see that on, on the report, many of the accounts are showing either zero or very limited expenditures or encumbrances. For example, as you know, most of our employees don't start until the, start of the school year, so we, all those salary accounts for our employees are, you'll see zeros, because we don't, that will be reflected until they start working, getting paid, and then it'll be covered out throughout the, the rest of the year. We're also in the process of creating all, all our annual purchase orders and uncovering funds for the year. That being said, we are working under a default budget. So, that's approximately three hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than we had originally proposed for an operating budget. And as I have reported to the board previously, we are, we, we already are aware of some some extra, or some unbudgeted expenses on the special education side. That's approximately two hundred thousand dollars, primarily due to an unbudgeted district placement, and that associated tuition and transportation. As you know, we are looking at areas of the budget where we can potentially recognize savings. So we are hopeful that as we go through the year, we can, we can, you know, make up for that, that deficit. But we also have our special education expendable trust that we can leverage. So towards the end of the year, when we have a better, you know, more clarity as far as where we, we, where we're standing, we could potentially utilize that trust for some of those costs. Currently, that balance is approximately three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, continuing that vein of good news, I do have a facilities related update, that, that does have financial implications. So as you know, we do, we have a redundant, two boiler redundant system, last year, one of those boilers reached end of life, and we had to replace it, and we utilized the building maintenance sustainable trust. We knew, because the other boiler was the same age, that we would need to address that second boiler as well. Well, we were notified by our insurance carrier that yeah, they, that, that second boiler is, it, it did not pass certification, so we cannot, that's also reached end of life. And we cannot utilize it. So what that means is, we're, we're currently running on that one boiler. However, that second boiler is what we utilize for our hot water, so we do have an emergency bypass to to instead of using that boiler, we'll be utilizing a, a new hot water tank, I believe, and Peter might correct me, but anyhow, that's some sort of bypass in order to provide hot water to the school. That's approximately four thousand dollars. But the larger cost will be replacing that boiler, so we are recommending that, we address that sooner than later. Before, you know, the winter, so we, we do have that option to utilize our building maintenance sustainable trust. We have a balance of a hundred, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that trust, that boiler is probably about sixty thousand dollars.
Does that count as a bid?
We would go out the bid for it. So alternatively, we could wait and, you know, propose a warrant article during this budget cycle. And it would go to the voters, and then it'd be looking at the summer to replace the, the boiler, however, I, we, we are recommending that we utilize the trust and do it sooner than later. So what I'm asking the board is direction as to how you'd like us to proceed.
I say use the trust, the funds in the trust, it needs to be replaced immediately, yes.
Cause I don't want us to get into winter with no hot water.
Well, it's a health issue too, we need to have hot water, so, yeah.
Alright, so I'll take that direction, we'll go through the, that RFP process and bring forth those results to the board once, once we conclude that.
Okay.
So, and, and we will need to have a, and at that point, we'll also have to have a public hearing for the, you know, to authorize it for all.
Will that be discussed during the facilities, sorry, Mar, will that be discussed during the facilities committee meeting on Monday?
Yes, we, we have a facilities committee meeting scheduled. And we'll, we'll discuss that, along with our full facilities plan and our other capital projects.
So just to clarify, cause I heard you say that you see we need hot water, we will have hot water in place, must just describe, you'll have a bypass in place to start the year.
Oh, no, I completely understand, I'm just trying to say the importance of doing this and the funds.
I just get, I just get very nervous about not having that second boiler available.
Yeah, absolutely.
Two brand new boilers in two years, we should be set up for success here in the future.
Right, I mean, we, they were installed at the same time, so it's not really a surprise that the second one went, but we were hoping that we'd be able to put it in. It would last through this winter, so we'd be able to do it in the summer, so unfortunately, that was not the case. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Mom. Alright, continue on business, we have to do the second policies.
So the first one in there is class size, and I know the super board had requested that, and I think Kelly, our last meeting, you were recommending possibly a class size of fourteen to sixteen for the middle school. So I did a five-year look back at enrollment, and at the middle school to accommodate that, in three of the last five years, you would need, have needed four additional classroom teachers, including last year. Two of those five years, you would have needed three additional teachers. So, that's certainly a direction the board can take, I would also encourage you, administration would need to figure out what happens in terms of space to accommodate that if that were to take place. It would likely mean that multiple educators, for example, Spanish or some of your unified arts, teachers might be on carts, because we don't have three additional classrooms or four additional classrooms at your disposal.
Uh, do we have an average number of students per class for K through two and three through eight, do you have like a?
You have, what's in the?
No, I, I see, I see that, but I mean currently, right now, in Seabrook. Do we have an average?
I, well, I'd ask to look at the middle school specifically, but I'm sure we can find that for you.
Okay.
If you want to come back to this policy, we can get to that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I was, I was just curious.
Yeah. That's, that's more consistent with your elementary, I think we gave you class size numbers, I had shared with your presentation a couple of weeks ago, the class size averages are in that, I would need to pull it up, I have it in front of me.
Oh, no, I can find it.
Alright, so we'll go to the next policies. So I've looked at the meeting minutes, I don't see why we would change that, the crow funding, I wouldn't change that. False alarm bomb, I didn't see any concerns with that. The only concerns that I had was changing the meeting minutes, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure why we would be changing that.
Because of a change to the law, that's what was in your first read last month.
So the law changed and said?
The law changed with respect to the non-public meeting minutes, and the ceiling minutes have to be sealed for a specified period of time.
Why is indefinitely what used to be correct?
Prior to the indefinitely correct, it's ten years.
It used to be indefinitely correct, now, when it's in the end on public, you have to give the specific.
You have to specify how long your ceiling is for to, yes.
Alright, so the crow funding, that was recommended, correct?
Do you want a motion for each individual, or do you want a collective motion?
With the pleasure of the board.
I don't have any issues with any of them, so unless.
You guys do.
I have a concern with the crow funding and crow funding and the public gift donation, I don't think we need to change that.
What's your concern with the crow funding?
Just the allocations of the funds, and then the public gift, the donations. There was a lot of verbiage on there on how, for example, before it was that the board had, could reserve the right to refuse any gift that did not contribute to the achievement of the district hold, but I'm pretty sure this one says that they do the discretion on the superintendent.
One note on that.
Was it?
One note, the important, the, the most important, it was from my perspective, aspect of that policy is that the state changed the law on the threshold of the donation
Right.
From five thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars, so for it to hold a public hearing, so it'd be, it'd be good to, at, at a minimum, make that change.
You mean the posting of the notice?
So that.
The requirement to hold a public.
So you won't have to hold a public hearing, so like, remember, you had to waive the policy when the, the PTO made a donation to a basketball court.
Yeah.
You won't have, like, the threshold was just higher, so you can, you don't have to hold it, you don't have to, no, it's in ten days, everything, you can just make that decision.
You can accept it prior to having the notice.
Right, thank you. Okay, I don't know if that's hard. Okay, so I will make a motion, unless, uh, what was the other one, Kelly, that you, the crow funding?
Do you want to go on those two separately? I'm just, I'm just hurrying. Alright, I am going to.
Did you read them? We're gonna write that.
I make a motion that we accept all the policies except for DFGA and KCD as recommended.
I'll second.
And we'll call, Lacey, yes, Patrick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yep.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Maria?
Yes.
Can we, can we draw these two while we're there? I believe, I think we should take the we should instill the policy for the five to twenty, because it's really a penny.
Yeah, that's fine, we can do that, but the rest of the wording can we keep the same?
Okay, alright.
To what it already is. So basically, the only thing we do is we would change a threshold for a special meeting. They would do. Can you review what the policies are, so we know what you're changing and not changing?
Yeah, so I'll read them out for you, um, so, um the policies are nursing mother's accommodation, meeting minutes, crow up funding, false alarms, bomb, active shooter, and other such threats, data governance and security, facilities development goals, and preparation of capital improvement plan, background investigation, criminal history, record check, academic honesty and integrity, change of class or school or assignment best interest in manifest hardship, physical examination of students, administering medication to students, and public gift donations. So those obviously have years of reading behind them, but that's the, those are the titles.
Is, is that where you discuss the two that you're saying that you don't want to change, like?
We'll, we'll discuss those in the study.
Yeah, we're just, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Uh, I make a motion that we, uh the two for withdrawal of JLA and JL CA dash R for withdrawal. As recommended.
I'll second.
And we'll call Lacey?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
And Maria?
Yes.
Okay, so to go back. I had to look back to the older meeting to see where the red is, and I'll be able to point out what differences are.
Okay.
It goes in January.
It was a joint board policy, KCD was in January, okay.
Policy, yes.
Want to go back to that?
Sure.
Go to the reopening plan?
Sure. Good idea.
What's up to the reopening plan, anyone?
Uh, so it's the same reopening plan you had, we're required as a recipient investor funds to continue to have that through September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, and this is your last pass, so we will update it with a new approved date, so it can be posted on the website to meet those requirements, so we don't have to pay back those funds.
Oh, we don't have to, yeah, you.
I motion to approve the continuation of the reopening plan as presented.
I'll second.
And we'll call Jen, yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Lacey?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
While, while we're waiting, I guess, did you want the update on class size?
We are sure.
Oh, yeah.
So the.
I mean, what are you gonna say?
The projections for the middle school for next year are fifth grade eighteen, sixth grade eighteen point five, seventh grade nineteen, eighth grade eighteen. Your current cap for middle school is twenty-five, but I have not seen that in my time here, and I'm not going back in the five-year period, I don't think you exceeded nineteen, nineteen to twenty. And then K through four, your limit in your existing policy is twenty, and those class sizes are projected to be fifteen in kindergarten, fourteen point seven five in first grade, fifteen in second grade, thirteen point seven five in third grade, and fifteen point two five in fourth grade.
Thank you. Yes.
I think cap to twenty-five is current. But if we cap at twenty, and then we get a grade that just happens to be larger than other grades, then we run into having another teacher and housing that teacher and.
So every, every year, we have the projections for the class sizes, and that's part of our proposals for the budget. So I don't think we would ever propose a budget that had class sizes in the mid-twenty, like twenty-five, and that would be your opportunity to then and if we did, for some reason, which I don't think we ever would, but if we did, you'd have that opportunity to then add a teacher at that point, right? Cause that, that's your decision. And, but you'll see those numbers, and you'll be able to make that decision on your budget, now, obviously, these are, those are enrollment projections, and things change, but even during the school year, then you, you know, say we have a influx of students for some reason. You, you, you always have that ability to, to make changes, like, it's a bottom line budget to, to make staffing changes during the school year as well, it's challenging, but, you know, worst case scenario.
So I've gone back to the policies, and I'm not finding the one that has the red where it strikes it out, I showed you where it changes. Do you know where that is, Mar? I want to do the joint board thing.
So can I just be clear, you're looking for KCD, or, I'm sorry, for the public gifts and donations?
The joint issue. Yeah.
I will look for that, does the board want to finish its discussion about the class size?
I feel comfortable with those numbers for the class size.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable.
Okay.
So should you want to, so you have that policy out separately as a motion, so do you want to do the motion on that class size policy? I have five tabs open, so I'm trying to find what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Trying to stick with the major projections.
So I believe it is, um, I make a motion to accept the policy, I believe it's, is it two B? Class size?
Yeah.
Is that what it says on the label?
I, I, it's I.
I, I.
I, I, sorry, I'm wrong with the number, yeah.
I, I.
No, you're not wrong.
No, I, I, B, I. Classes. Squint them.
Second.
Class size at what?
I, I, B, class size.
As proposed.
As proposed, okay. I, I, Captain.
Thank you.
And Patrick, did you second?
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll call Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Lacey?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
So yes, do you want to move on, and then we can come back to those two policies while I start.
Okay, yeah, so, um, as you're aware, we have an after-school snacks and supper program, that's, that's conducted through the child and adult. Um that's um, that's conducted through the um child and adult, um adult care food programs, the ACFP. Um that's, those are snacks and supper that our school nutrition department prepares and then we get reimbursed. And SaaS as the after-school care program um disseminates to our students. Um, we were um recently notified on July thirtieth. That um from the New Hampshire Department of Education, Office of Nutrition Programs and Services. Um that Seabrook no longer qualifies for the um, for the after-school snacks and suppers.
Do we have a reasoning why we lost qualification?
Well, they, they have a set of metrics, um they.
It's changed.
They have um, yeah, so we. So I can read the kind of the letter, so the um, the program must provide regularly scheduled childcare services, cannot be an educational or enrichment program. It can only serve children up to the age of twelve or per seven CFR two twenty-six point nineteen. Um and we, we do serve students over twelve in the middle school, so that's part of the reason. I think there's also, they also look at socioeconomic factors, um, um and um there's other, there's a list of qualifications. Um we are um appealing that decision, um we, we feel strongly that we, we should, we should. Um we, we have always qualified, um and um we, we feel that that's an important service that we provide our students, um.
How much does that provide for the students money-wise?
I'm sorry, what was?
How much money does that program provide?
Oh, the, the reimbursement, um. I don't know an exact number, um it would be, um, I mean.
Cause if we get denied again, is there another creative way that we could look at maybe fundraising and or community building and or the brook and or, I mean, there's a bunch of.
Yeah, I mean, so we would still, we would still be able to at a minimum offer the snacks portion. Um and we could, we can, we still, we still qualify for reimbursement under the National School Lunch Program for the snacks program. Um talking to um to our um school nutrition um manager, Lindsay Goucher. Um she indicated that the, the actual participation level for the supper portion is actually, isn't terribly high. Because tho- those are the students, um and there's, there's not many of them that stay, all stay until six o'clock late, later in the evening. Um but she feels that the, that between the lunches we provide during the day and, and then the snack, that um, that she's pretty comfortable with that. Um that being said, um should this be a final decision, we can certainly bring forth um a cost estimate to. Um to um, you know, to, to continue to provide supper. That being said, um obviously, I just previously this evening explained our, our budget issues for this year. Um but certainly, if there were. You know, other sources of funding via fundraising or donations, that, that could also potentially cover that deficit.
Will this take an effect um in a couple of weeks when all the kids are using SaaS?
So that'll be at the start of this year, yes.
Okay. So we are open for any donations for these children. For snacks and.
We just gotta donate.
Untrustables.
We just gotta.
So the, so the.
That's pretty unpaid, I'm shocked.
Last wire offer. Yeah.
And that's for the actual student balances.
Okay.
For, from last.
Okay.
Year.
So everyone goes in.
Yeah, so that's separate from the actual.
So if, if anybody in the community did wanna donate, they would con, who would they contact?
Um s- certainly, um they could reach out to our principals or they, or to myself.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Sure.
Um is Matt talking about, I couldn't quite understand, is he talking about the after-school meals that they provide and stuff?
Yes.
So we used to get funding and now we don't qualify for the. For student.
For the supper.
For the supper.
For SaaS, right?
The summer por, the supper portion.
Yes, for SaaS, Maria.
Okay, can I make a suggestion, um at least Patrick mentioned it, maybe you'll go a little more and the rest of us, I just wanna say. We had suggested um that SaaS look at maybe charging a amount of money for students that can't afford it. Maybe you wanna slide the scale, go by the food reduced lunch to supplement that program. Um and I'm just kinda throwing that out there, that hasn't been done yet, and I don't know if he's attending on it, but that's also a topic. So obviously, this kid's the goal, they can't afford it, but there's definitely people that have their kids that absolutely could afford to give something. So I think that's an option, so we don't miss out, right?
Do you wanna go back and put those two policies?
Yeah, I was just thinking of them, so if the funding that we get is federal funding, it, it's not given to SaaS, it's given to the school, correct?
We get reimbursement for the meals that we, cause we're the ones that are spending, like purchasing the food, preparing it, SaaS is just distributing, yes.
Yeah, cause I was just thinking we can't.
Go ahead.
Alright, yeah, we can go back to the policies if you have them in front of you.
I do, so these are from the January um Joint Board Policy Committee meeting, so the markup um is directly in there. Um the revision notes from the School Board Association were to increase the amount from five thousand to twenty thousand dollars of unanticipated revenue. To change the policy from an optional policy to a recommended policy, and to increase the amount the superintendent can accept as a donation from five hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's like the donation Colleen reported to you in her letter today, right now, those are capped at five hundred dollars. If you make this change, it would just increase that amount to twenty-five hundred. Um and. Um and three languages added to coordinate with the crowdfunding policy. So specifically in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph. Um it says the superintendent may accept gifts subject to the terms of this policy in the amount of twenty-five hundred or less. The superintendent will advise the board in advance of acceptance if possible, or if after acceptance at the next regularly scheduled board meeting. It's in excess of twenty-five hundred, so the change there is the twenty-five hundred in that sentence, and then in the next sentence, it changes the amount from five thousand to twenty thousand. Um the next sentence, it changes again the five thousand to twenty thousand. And then in the last paragraph of the policy, it says um. Active solicitation of gifts to be received by the district, including by any school, classroom, or extra co, extra slash co-curricular program in the district. It previously said including soliciting gifts, that is crossed out, um so. Active solicitation of gifts to be received by the district, including by any school, classroom, or extra slash co-curricular program in the district through online crowdfunding or donor websites. Must be approved in accordance with board policy DFGA, which is the crowdfunding policy that you will, I can now leave to you as well.
And the, and just uh, the crowdfunding policy is important because that's kind of a. For lack of a better word, black hole, right? Cause anyone could set up a GoFundMe account or, so it's important that we have some procedures and policy in place to regulate that. So we can certainly, the board certainly has that, the ability to change, you know, some of the wording or whatever. But it, it is really important that we have some type of procedure in place, um because it's, it's such a, it's a newer concept. So.
So the red line of this policy, DFGA?
Yeah, where do you see the red line, so I'm just trying to find that, because I already looked through the policy and I saw the red line and there was something that stood out, and that's why I brought it up.
Are, are we talking about the crowdfunding policy?
Both of them.
Okay.
So I'm on the Joint Board Policy Committee page.
Yep.
Okay, and is it under January twenty-four?
Yep.
Twenty-second, January twenty-second?
So if you scroll down to there's. I don't know if I've heard about that or.
Right there.
So open. From that, scroll down on this page. Which policy did you call, public gift donation?
Yeah.
Are you signed in?
Yeah.
This looks like the public view. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, maybe it's right there.
Good.
Okay. Okay, well.
I'm happy that.
Yeah, it says private, open log on.
Yeah, because you're not the policy committee rep.
I am. So you should be able to see it in that January twenty-four.
But that, I saw it recently because I.
This is it.
Got it?
Yeah.
But I have.
That's okay, as long as you happen to come up at it, it was a reason. Yeah, see, I did see this, we, we first called it, it's.
Cause you're not the policy committee rep at this time, but for that meeting, but Lacey is, I think Lacey can see the policy committee documents at this time.
Okay.
So that's public gift donation.
So the here's any changes are um financial, those numbers.
Yeah.
But there was also an allocation change. Where it went from the board shall to the board may. And then there was some other things.
But if, if you don't wanna approve them today, that's fine, I, I know we've been. Best management.
I know, I know. May accept gifts of money. Right here, however such a vote. Has occurred, the only way money may be accepted and expended, it's still warrant approved by what, this policy sounds that the district has approved. Can we hold off on this just so I can read it, because there was things that stood out to me. The super, right here, the superintendent may accept gifts subject to the terms of this policy in the amount of twenty-five hundred, the superintendent will advise a board.
Do you have to take a break?
Yeah, no, I don't need to take a break, we can just hold off on it.
You can table it.
Yeah, table it. But there was a reason.
Just table it.
Okay, we'll table this, okay. But it has something to do with the allocation of the money for the joint board versus just Seabrook School.
This is a Seabrook board policy?
No, I know, I know that, but I'm just, it said that if it was according to the joint board's goals, it had something in there.
When I read through them, they looked pretty good to me, I'd like to vote on them, but I guess if we're tableing them, I don't think I have a choice here, correct? What's one versus one versus tables?
It's not a big deal to table it, it's crowdfunding and.
I'd like to.
You're uncomfortable with going forward.
Motion to table.
Your two.
Policy DFGA crowdfunding and KCD, public gifts and donations.
How can you see the um, the word on and what was changed?
I could on hers, but I, I have to look over it because it is on our computer somewhere because we saved it, so it should still be there. Which one, KCD?
Yes.
Okay.
And this one?
Is there a second? So, yeah, I was just waiting for, I'll second. So Maria, can you hear me? You're gonna make a motion to table policy DFGA crowdfunding and policy KCD, public gift donations? Is there to a date specific?
Till the next meeting, so.
Next.
Jen, you were gonna second that?
Yes.
Does it mean that we can't accept donations?
Not until eight years old.
No, 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 no.
It has nothing to do with.
We have a college school coming up, are we like also gonna, we get donations?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. It may require a public hearing depending on the amount, if it's over five thousand dollars, it will require a public hearing, but it doesn't conclude us, conclude the board can accept a gift.
Alright, good. And the room, we'll call vote?
Okay.
No.
Jen?
Yes.
Lacey?
Yes.
Patrick?
No.
Maria?
Yes.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Acceptance of gift from St. Vincent de Paul.
Make a motion to accept the donation of five thousand dollars from St. Vincent de Paul Hampton for the students' meals from Seabrook Food Service Program.
I'll second. I have rule call, Lacey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five SMS student handbook as presented.
I'll second her discussion.
Yes, I presented the eighty point A. For discussion, do you have any dis, do you have a discussion for the handbook too, Maria?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I went through my suggestions and I think it'd be a great addition, a clarification.
For what, what'd she say?
We can't hear her.
Yep.
Can you say that again, they can't hear you.
I, I love today, I think it would be a great um addition um to the handbook. And I just, I looked at it and I think that it's been input, if the board feels uncomfortable doing that yet, I'll finally table it till the next meeting, but we have to approve.
We need a handbook before we school's start, so I was, I'm saying, I have to do what I.
Yeah, we can't table the handbooks, we need them um approved by tonight.
Right, so I, um do you need a motion to attach Kelly's, Kelly's suggestion to it?
We already have a motion on the table, the motion has to be voted on and approved or denied as written before we can go on to the next motion.
No, I'm seconded, so we're having discussion on it right now.
Yeah.
So she wants to talk about things that she had in the handbook.
It still needs a vote.
I know, but it's open for discussion right now. So we can't vote on it yet. It's good, y'all.
Okay.
Can we start with dress code?
Come on.
Yes.
Do you wanna discuss on why you don't think that it should be a rush?
No, I think you shouldn't.
Can I go over here?
Can I ask, um.
No, this is.
Kelly's the only one that um provided feedback on the dress code, we got it yesterday um afternoon. At like four-thirty, so um. Looked at it, um like to discuss it and have a conversation about maybe what your thoughts are as a board on what we put in for the dress code. Um and I appreciate Kelly's input, um I don't know if anybody else has any input in terms of the dress code section. I'd like to discuss maybe concerns that potentially will arise from that.
Thirty-four.
Also, um I don't know if you won this, but when we created the dress, well, actually when we created the entire handbook. Um which we briefly talked about last night, um we referenced other schools in the SAU, I don't know if you guys won that, or copies of that.
I did, I did.
I did copy paste, um so I have, sorry for the public, can't see this, Barnard School, Lincoln Ackerman, Wentworth High School, Campston. Um Josh, I think looked maybe at like Portsmouth Middle School, we looked at high schools. Due diligence, we're trying to get information across lots of schools, cause the dress code is. What, the, the previous dress code wasn't a code that we, we created, um and we felt like, and looking at all of the other schools. What's the language we wanna use for our kids? So if we could just talk about the first bullet item that says no stretchy, skin tight, or seafood clothing. Uh definitely a great issue, never have seafood clothing, probably more of a girlish, a little boy issue. Um stretchy, skin tight, um we talked a lot about, alright, girls wear yoga pants. Okay, so uh this is why we're discussing, so you can clarify for me, a lot of our girls wear yoga pants and like. No, um and they're probably tight depending on your weight.
Well, I'm thinking about skirts, like stretchy, tight skirts.
Okay.
I think you started the same idea, but hers is more in-depth to what yours was.
So it's.
That's a good idea, yoga pants, yeah, I know what you're saying, you have to be careful about the way you're saying it.
Well.
Do you guys have something to say? Do you guys have something to say? Well, they, you guys have a lot to talk, and I do all the, I don't know if you want to turn another public.
I'm sorry.
I'm wearing skirts. Like, my skirts are that. They're long, stretchy skirts.
So can I, can, can I?
Yes, yes, you can.
Have you guys wanna chime in on stretchy skirts? I have two, I have two daughters, okay, so trust me, I, I, I understand this from the daughter, I don't have a son.
I guess I refer to the ones that get out of the car and you're like, oops, that. I'm talking tight shorts.
Okay. Uh, no t-shirts was violent, I think we already said that, we talked about graphics, hey, nobody wants that. No spaghetti straps, okay, like, I have spaghetti strap drawers on.
I have sweater on over it.
Alright, I have sweater on over it.
And it's not lace.
I would.
Sweater, sweater secret.
So what I will say is.
So when your kid catches you and says, mom, there's a girl in front of me wearing a black negligee strap, spaghetti strap shirt on in front, no, and it's all day and no one says anything, like, and he.
So I will say that the girls in middle school, across, across everywhere, cause I had two daughters, are gonna wear spaghetti straps. Do I want like lace, uh, I'm gonna just, like lace bralettes, no, do I wanna see girls like, you know, bras or underclothes or boys with that factor, pants like hanging down, no. I mean, I don't think we wanna see that, but our girls, this building is like, asked them eighty degrees, eighty-five degrees, they're gonna wear little spaghetti straps. Shirts, that should be appropriate, so I think that we, we will have some problems with this spaghetti strap, cause they probably have potentially already, you know, they have them in their closet or they've already bought them. So like, I'm wondering where that and tank tops, they're gonna wear tank tops, the girls are gonna wear tank tops. The area that I think that we looked at and quite honestly didn't really know how to approach it, or in all candid, is when we have skin showing, alright? So where, where can we talk about what is appropriate level of skin? Because the teacher the first week of school, you gotta dress code that kid, I was like, I don't even know what dress code means, what do you, what do you mean by that? How much skin are we letting show, are we letting any skin show, no skin show, little skin show, two inches of skin? Because they're gonna say something to the girls, and mostly girls, you'll forgive me for saying that, and then the girls are maybe gonna come to me and I'm gonna have a. Hey, honey, that's a really cute shirt, do you think you could put a sweater on? Cause that's what I've done, and I know they've done that as well, you got a sweater in your locker, I got one, or do we have a shirt you could put over that, that's not appropriate in a school, so. When I, when I look at some of the things and how it's rooted, Kelly, in all honesty, it's like real specific. And I think that we have to determine like, at what point do we say how we list it, because all these other schools. And I don't, I don't know where you got yours, if that was something that you created, or not as, as.
I got it from another.
Sorry, what?
I got it from another school, not from here.
In the SAU?
No. I looked at theirs and theirs is not specific enough, to be honest with you.
Yeah, none of them, not even the high school.
No.
So, do we wanna, do we wanna go there with that? I guess it's my question.
What did you thought you wanted, they had a fit about that dress code for the last three years, so what did you thought?
Well, the dress code that was presented to us at the beginning of two school years ago, that was literally non-existent, I mean, I think this is a piece, addresses. More of the stuff that's gonna give more clarity to what can and can't be worn, um, because we didn't have anything about the shorts, we didn't have anything.
Yep.
I mean, this is astronomically better than the one that Jamie presented to us two years ago.
But if it says if jeans are not short and the shorts are deemed too short, what do you consider too short?
Well, I'm pretty.
I can take that calling.
No, because. Alright, so I'll give you an example of that, because we grappled with that, trust me, and I didn't really wanna say, hi, I don't wanna see your cheeks hanging out of your jeans, but I don't wanna have some hanging out of your jeans. You can ask these teachers, okay, have they sent kids to me, have other kids said things, absolutely, I, I, I specifically remember an eighth grade girl, I probably had three kinds of listen. You can't wear those jean shorts, okay, for a lot of reasons, people have spoken to me, it's not okay, you know, do you have anything in your locker? It's usually my first best friend, like, cause some women have a stockpile in their locker, cause they leave your house with one thing on and then they come here and they go in the bathroom and all of a sudden they have a different outfit on, I, my own kid did that. I've seen that happen, so we, we do have those conversations with kids, because it's not appropriate, you're supposed to, you're supposed to look like a young lady or a young man, and I know we're talking more about girls and boys, right?
Just go to uniforms.
So I, I think, no.
That's a tactic on you.
I think that you have to trust our professional integrity that we're gonna address.
This is, this is much better than it's been, if it was solely up to me, I would have a uniform policy in place, that would be a collared shirt and pants and or shorts. Everyone can afford a two dollar polo at Walmart, or we could work on providing them, I went to Catholic private schools, you give people something exactly for it, I would be all for a policy that had. You're wearing a collared shirt or you're wearing shorts and or pants that have belt loops, appropriate fitting shoes, but I understand that I'm like.
Boring.
There, I don't care about boring, I'm here to learn.
Thank you.
I love the idea.
I'm here to be taught, I would love to see public schools, and a lot of public schools are now going towards a dress code, because now you don't have bullying incidents over, this kid's got all the designer clothes, this kid's got that. Everyone looks the same, you come into class, we say it's red, white, blue or gray poles, cause that's the school color, you can go get one, you wear your shorts with either cargo shorts or a belt or a skirt that comes down and just comes to knee, there's a lot of ways that you can do it.
I hate it.
I think you would have some great, great feedback from your parents, um, but if it was up to me on record, I would one hundred percent have a dress code that was a polo shirt and or pants.
Well, if you look at a primary school dress code, their dress down day is literally what I, what I put down on this.
As far as changes, as far as changes from last year, I can, I can one hundred percent accept that this is way better than what's been done since.
Like ripped jeans where you can see they're.
So I think this is appropriate, I think a lot of the stuff that you mentioned, and it's more specific, but, um, reading this over, like the spaghetti strap, like, I, I totally get your idea, I'm wearing a spaghetti strap dress right now.
Oh, you're not feeling how.
Well, no, cause I'm an adult, when I was fourteen, I was, so.
Right, so when you were fourteen, you, you were fourteen, you needed guidance and you needed to be told, you need to come around.
Right, but I think, uh, and they're inappropriate, they can say this.
I don't dissolve this. That's where it's parents, and I've had plenty of conversations with parents, that's where I say to a parent, hi, you know, your daughter or son is not dressed appropriately and you have to trust that, I. I'm a mother of two girls, my own kid got dress coded in high school and she got sent to the office and she had, and I'll tell you exactly what she had, Abercrombie, little corduroy skirt, tights, little boots, little shirt, little, little cami. And the principal said, and she said, yeah, honey, like, why don't you wear that for the weekend when you go out with your friends, and you know what she said to her? She goes, my mother bought me that outfit. So I said, wow, that's disrespectful, Kelly. And she's like.
Your daughter's.
And she's like.
Is this the one that always gave you the hot times?
That's a whole bunch.
Was that, was that her name?
No, Karen, so she went to private school, if they said, don't wear a chunky necklace, she'd wear a chunky necklace, if they said, don't wear that kind of belt, she'd wear that kind of belt, and I said, you're gonna get what you deserve, which would be a detention. And then at one point, the guy in detention said, like, I don't think your daughter's like buying what we're selling.
So she got a detention for the dress code?
She absolutely, because she got a warning, a warning, a warning and a detention.
Wow. Well, that's.
I would accept this dress code with.
We have warnings.
Do they give detentions? Do they give detentions?
So, I would accept this dress code with the caveat of, like, principal discretion, if a principal comes up and says, that is deemed inappropriate, like, that, like, that's a catch-all.
The sentence.
That's kinda why we put that in it, and I would say to adults, sorry guys, they would probably tell me, you gonna talk to that girl about those shirts, so like, you think, is that okay? Which had many a conversation, and I don't disagree with that, I think that when we get so specific, like spaghetti straps, okay, and adults wear spaghetti straps. Like, are the spaghetti straps appropriate, is the shirt appropriate, it's a different conversation than parents who have already bought clothes for their kids that ask if spaghetti straps. We put a sweatshirt on.
Okay, so I think.
That handled that.
I think, um.
Okay.
Alright, we already have a motion on the table, so.
So are you gonna talk about, you wanna talk about your other thing, the behavior?
We both.
No?
Let's do it.
So we're going to motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five SMS student handbook.
Yes.
As presented, that was by Patrick. Um, second by Jen. And Lacy?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep.
Jen?
Yes.
And Maria?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Yeah, was there any questions about the elementary handbook or any concerns?
I still think it has a lot of restorative justice, um, behaviors in there, the PR to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that was put in there, um, again, I, I, I explained it last night, but it was really put in there, cause it's part of the, um. The code, under code of conduct, there, there's something in there, the policy about that being one of the supports and strategies, um. And so that's where I pulled that from, that wasn't just my idea, um, it does come from policy, but it's something that I can look into, but as I sort of explained yesterday, there's. A lot of circumstances where kids are gonna listen to other kids, and, and, so we wouldn't pull a kid out of class without parents' permission, but, for example, if I have a kindergarten student and they have a, a relationship outside of school with an older, say, third grader. I can use that third grader to help get that kindergarten student back on track, again, with parents' permission, because they have a relationship outside of school and they're family friends, and that five-year-old listens to that nine-year-old. Um, and, and it just works, and it might not work with everyone, but I think that's why it was probably in there under, under the policy as a suggestion, and that's why it's in the, in the handbook. But if that's a discussion we wanna have, I'm happy to have that discussion.
So that, is that kind of like a privacy concern, because that other child's aware of what that student did wrong?
So if it's, again, with, with, with parent's permission, it, I hear you, but if, if the parents are okay with it, cause again, this, these types of things often tend to do have kids with siblings or kids with. Just friends outside of school, family friends, and so that's really, I wouldn't be doing that is without parent permission.
And I would take remediation, I, I, I mean, on an elementary level, that looks like two kids, like, were grabbing the same toy in the sand table at, you know, during choice time.
That's right.
And the teacher takes the two of them off to the side and has a conversation about how do we take turns and how do we use our words and what should we say when someone grabs it, that's, that's a peer mediation for, uh, uh, you know, five and six-year-olds.
Yeah, but we have, that elementary doesn't just have five and six-year-olds, it has fourth graders.
I agree. Sure, but it, and you have to be developmentally appropriate, and sometimes that's okay with third and fourth graders who say mean things to each other, we need to, who are friends but who have been unkind. And you pull them aside and you have a conversation, being unkind isn't, isn't gonna be solved necessarily by a detention, it's gonna be solved by having a conversation with the students and figuring out what the root cause of the problem is, so they can work it out.
I, I see it as being effective in my day-to-day practice, and so I think it's just, again, why it's there as an option.
And this is, we're talking options here, this is, like, it's still gonna be part of progressive discipline, like, you're not, if a kid gets in a fistfight, we're gonna jump to tier two or tier three.
Right.
And not be like, alright, you guys got in a fight, let's go sit outside and talk about this one, like.
Exactly.
But this is, so we're, let's get that out to the school year, I'm like, we got two new principals, we got vice principals, I think. Let's see how some things play out, I, we, you've heard of it, for two years now, talking about discipline, if this is a small portion of it that's in the handbook, great. But there definitely needs to be the actual discipline, removing major distractions and stuff like that, from, I think we're putting our, our faith in you in this, I, I think that we have to allow some things to play out, to see how the school.
This is just another tool in the toolbox.
Yes, I don't wanna take away everything, but I do wanna, like, they know where we stand, we wanna see some discipline in the classroom, we don't want the fights that we had last year. We don't want the distractions and the kids not learning because of chairs being thrown and stuff like that.
Right.
We need to definitely be heavier on the discipline, if this is one little thing that you can use to work your way through the progressive discipline, so we.
Right, Kelly, can I, can I some, some question?
Sure.
So, the piece of it though, and, and Patrick, I understand probably where you're coming from, um, you know, the peer-to-peer can also be that a child has been going the whole entire school year. And finally speaks out and gets put in a room with a child, and that's the type of stuff that I think we don't wanna see, you know, and obviously, our victim, you're wondering, that has been really awful to somebody for the whole time. Yes, but peer-to-peer as far as you're up in session, you see something that's not okay, so that speak term is different, and I also wanna go from Patrick's stand, and I gotta ask him. So you have sort of like a classroom that is run by EBA, that when you do have to remove kids from the classroom for whatever reason, you send and they have somebody to go sit with, meet with, is that still in, um, place?
I. So if you're referring to zones, I would say that's not the, the sole, that's not zones purpose, um.
What is it? What is it again?
Zoned.
Yeah, so it's referred to as zones, which is short, I guess, for zones of regulation, um, and so that's not the, the focus of that program, it's more.
Do you use a, uh, do you use, um, a proactive?
Yep, so it's a, it's more of a proactive approach to addressing behavior and working with the team, teacher, parents, and trying to be able to address, let's say, for example, the example I used last night, a student is always acting out in the beginning of math. Let's get to the bottom of that and figure out why, maybe they just need to get the wiggles out before math starts, and so they would go to the zones room to do that, and so it's very just tailored to the individual needs of that student. But it's really more, supposed to be more of a proactive approach, however, he is available to do that if needed, but that's not really why we have him.
So you, so if you have a student that is disruptive, obviously it's elementary, um, you do have a choice to send them to the zone room, is that, um, is that an EBA that runs that room?
So our BCBA runs zones.
However, he's available to take that.
And so I think that he, the EBA you might be referring to is, uh, Mr. McKenzie.
Is that a zone room where you do, you know, you have that extra support, so in other words, if a kid being disruptive, the teacher loses, you know, fifteen to twenty minutes of learning time as it's, you know, continues disruption. There is an alternative to be able to go to the zone room and kinda get to the bottom of what's going on and then report that to the teacher and staff to resolve, we, that's, that's something I think is wonderful.
It doesn't really work that way though, Maria, it, it really works through, if the teacher is having a problem with a child disrupting class, they are typically calling the office for assistance with that child disrupting class. There are some students who have behavior plans, where zones is a part of that behavior plan or intervention and, and support plan, where they might have previously scheduled times, where they might have a specific plan. Through a five oh four plan or a behavior plan that allows them to access the zones room for a period of time under certain circumstances, but disruptive behavior is dealt with by administration.
So it's not an, it's not a class for, it's not a room for everyone, Maria, it's just the people that have a behavior plan.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think, I don't know if I, I feel like we have sixty-five girls or something odd in that room last, I have heard of last year, I don't know if that was right or not, but. My point is, I think it's wonderful, and the point is we need something just like that in middle school.
For all students, not just.
But we proposed a BCBA in the budget, and it was reduced, and we're now in a default budget, so I don't disagree, and we're happy to propose that again for the upcoming year, um.
Well, you guys recommended the cut during the default budget.
Because we had to make tough choices.
Right, right, you recommended the cut.
I think we have enough people in the house that we can figure that out, because we had that room in the middle school and then it got moved to the elementary again, and we don't have it anymore, so I think it's worth looking at as a board.
We can, we can take a look at that, um, moving forward, um. I make a motion to approve the SES two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five Student Parent and Guardian Handbook.
One second. I'll call Lacy?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept the Exer Curricular Stipend Committee recommendations as presented.
Second.
On the committees, on the stipends?
Yeah, that's me.
Yep.
Okay, so I just wanted to speak and give a little bit of a quick overview. We had a Flex account and that we had suggested be added because all the other schools actually have that Flex account. There was two sports that were not, we utilized that, not even moved back into the account. There was some other things that there was two people doing, you know, a stipend split or whatever, and there's also we talked about the number of students that we have now for softball and baseball. And we have an A and B team for basketball. And we do not for softball, so we were hoping, you know, that that could be looked at in this, you know, nearing the spring. I'll get a question here to how many would be interested in or whatever. And that would allow us to move those funds and have those. And also, it was mentioned for the Alma Society to be added because we don't have to add one at this time. And first I think the last, there was some really good ideas that were brought forward, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to move?
It's all, it's all in the motion, so if we accept it, all those get accepted, correct?
Yep.
It doesn't change anything.
As presented.
Yeah.
Yeah. Roll call, Lacy?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Yeah, so the budget season is coming upon us, and we do plan on delivering a budget to, to the school board by November fourteenth, at which point we will meet on a few evenings for a few hours and go through the budget. The school board will have the opportunity to make any adjustments as, as you see fit. And, and we will plan to have a final budget for the, to submit to the Budget Committee by December thir-, I'm sorry, we'll deliver it to them by December fifth. The public hearing is currently scheduled for January twentieth, and the deliberative session for February third. So we are asking for, for board approval to hold that deliberative session on February third.
So it says that the Civic School Board is going to get the budget on November fourteen, and that the school board will have it completed by what, December third? So that's like having two, three meetings?
So I believe we have three meetings scheduled currently. Ron, you should have received calendar invites from, from Rhonda. And they're typically, I believe they're scheduled for three hours.
We just need a motion for the third.
Right, just for the deliberative session.
Okay, so if we make the motion for the third, for the February third, we can still work with the schedule a little different if we need to before that, correct?
Yeah, so that has no bearing on the us meeting. That being said, if you do wanna make adjustments to the dates, the sooner the better because we have a lot of meetings in that timeframe.
Those are the whole work calendar.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll make a motion to hold a deliberative session on Monday, February third, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Lacy?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
So, um, I just wanna speak on this because I'm on the Policy Committee for this next one, for the first read of these policies. I'll read them all so everybody knows what I'm talking about. Out of nondiscrimination, equal opportunity employment, and anti-discrimination plan, procedural safeguards, nondiscrimination on the basis of disability, food nutrition services, anti-discrimination, social rights complaints, drug-free workplace, drug-free schools, prohibi-, prohibitions regarding use and possessions of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and ema liquids in and out, in and on school facilities and grounds, drug-free workplace, drug-free schools, it's all kind of the same.
Yeah, they're just a different section.
And different sections. So, um, we went over this at the Policy, the Joint Board Policy Committee in May. And I think we went over a lot more than this, but these are the ones that we all agreed upon, and all of these are basically, are gonna be revised due to new laws.
So much. It's just a first read, so there's no action required at this.
No, I know, I was a class meeting.
So, this one's, this one's gonna be fun because we talked about this one, so we can just move on from the first read. We're good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to bring up the Power School. On the agenda, we have Power School numbers, first grades. And I just wanna bring that up because I'm the one that asked that, for that to be on the agenda. So we talked about it a little last night in our retreat, and I, we kept kinda saying we'll talk about it tomorrow. But the reason I brought it up is because when parents get their child's report cards, they're graded by one, two, three, fours, the grading scale, which it has been for a while. But when I went into Power School, I noticed in historical grades that they were given letter grades. And so my discrepancy was, is why are we giving letter grades in Power School, but yet my report card is coming home with, you know, fours and threes. I pulled fours, but threes. So that was my question, is why are we not using letter grades? Because I, I honestly don't know. So, um, also, a concern of mine was, you know, when I get my, well, if my son's report card and he gets a two, I'm sorry, he gets a three in a subject, and then I look at historical grades and it's like, oh, he got a C minus. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, in my head a three is like a B, and I know I'm wrong, Rebecca, because Rebecca talked about it last night. I know that mindset is wrong. Now I do. But in my head, in a lot of parents' heads that are my generation older, we're used to the A, B, C, D. You know, we're non-educators, so we don't understand. And so I was like, oh, a three is like a B, and then I look in Power School and it says a C minus, and I'm like, wait a minute, he would've been grounded. So I just wanted to kinda talk about that and kinda understand on why the historical data or the grades say, you know, letter grades versus report cards and everything coming home with one, twos, threes, and fours. So that's why I brought that up.
It's a great question. So, and I think it's, oh, I'm sorry, Maria, you have another? Can I?
Do you want, do you want Lauren to answer, and then you ask your question, or do you wanna ask your question first, Maria?
Uh, sure, yeah, well, I sometimes can leave because you're a little delayed, but yeah, I just had a comment. Whenever you, whenever you say, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, a few years ago, we transitioned from percent grades, which is what you're talking about with the A, B, C, letter grades. We transitioned away from those to competency-based grades, one, two, three, four. So it's a really great time to revisit that. And I'm grateful that you're bringing this up because, you know, we can answer some questions tonight, but I, but I'd love to do a more in-depth information session for parents.
Definitely.
Because I think it's time to do that. So we, we've had them in our, you know, on our report cards, we've used them in classrooms. And I think it's time to go back to looking at them deeper than we're going to do tonight. So I will absolutely get a date on the calendar to bring parents in. So with just a few things from last night, and again, this is why it's so important for us to keep talking to each other. Because I wasn't aware of what you were talking about, right? So today, we're at our administrative retreat. I was able to talk with some folks across our SAU and realize that, oh my gosh, yeah, we, there's a tab where we can see these grades. So, and that's not supposed to be available to parents because we don't use those grades. We don't, we don't put grades, we don't put a hundred points into Power School. So how is it calculating, let's say, a seventy-five?
Right.
When we don't put in, you know, a hundred-point scale grades? We don't have teachers doing that anymore. So I reached out to our SAU IT and talked to the Technology Department at our SAU and had a, had a conversation today there. And so we're figuring that out on the way that we can shut that off.
No.
Because it's not, well, here's what I'll explain.
You don't need to see this.
No, and here's what I would explain, and I, and I'm going, and I'm gonna, hopefully I'm gonna represent, and so so the reason why those, let's say, a D minus currently right now, if you're seeing it in there, it's not accurate because there aren't any percent grades in Power School. When teachers go to put a grade in, they don't put the number sixty-five like we did in the old days. They don't put seventy-five. They put a one, two, three, or a four. So those letter grades you're seeing, it's an algorithm is faulty. It doesn't work. It's not, you're not, they're, they're not lining up to their achievement.
Well, then just go back to the grades.
So that's the second conversation. So the first conversation is Power School as a technical, as a technical issue. Okay, so we need to shut down the, those grades because the algorithm is, isn't, it doesn't function. It's not, it's not working. And we're not, and that's not how we're grading students. We're grading them through competency scores. So if we wanna have a deeper conversation about whether or not we should use competency scores, you know, that's, that's something different. And that, when we took a look at competency scores a few years ago, we did, we did a lot of deep professional development on that. Teachers realigned their curriculum, they realigned their rubrics, their projects all across our SAU schools. It's a New Hampshire initiative. I gave you some slides, and I think they were uploaded into your, into your, into your documents tonight. And I know we haven't had a chance to look at it because it was from last night to today. But I did. To refresh because Oh, okay, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't able to. Okay, upload them. Yeah. So we're trying to upload them, but I can email them to you. I just made them from last night to today. So.
So how is it calculating then? So if you have trigmas to one and they have an, it shows a B plus, but then trigmas to three, it shows a D minus, how did that happen?
That's an error.
How? You, I need explanation only.
So, so behind Power School, there's, there's an algorithm that's in there like a, like a math problem, like a math problem. It's like a, they're correlating, Power School's correlating the one with some arbitrary number, and the two with some arbitrary number, and three with some arbitrary number. And then they're calculating and averaging that together, so you're seeing a C minus. But it's really not a C minus because nowhere did the teachers put in percent grades. If it was an authentic a hundred percent scale, which I, I was a teacher for almost thirty years, and mostly, but I used a hundred-point scale. And then for ten years I didn't. I preferred the one, two, three, four for a lot of reasons. We can get into that at a different time. But putting in the hundred-point scale is a whole different ball of wax. The, the hundred-point scale is a teacher scores a test and it goes in as a seventy-two, the next one's a seventy-eight, and those are averaged together. And then you get your accurate C plus. What you're seeing right now in Power School is arbitrary. Though that, those, that's why we're gonna, that's why we don't want parents to see that because it's not a reflection.
So it's like a software glitch?
It's a glitch, it's a glitch in the algorithm.
So they're basically doing what? Yeah, the size, like a three is a eighty, three, it comes up as a number.
But because we're not putting in actual hundred-point scale numbers as a mathematician, those, it's not working, okay?
Well, that makes me feel better.
Yeah, so that's, I know, and honestly, I, when I left that meeting, I, because I'm the Power School grade person, I was losing my breath a little. I was like, oh my gosh, you're seeing historical grades. What is I talking about? Trying to get on there. Didn't sleep well last night for a lot of the reasons that probably everyone else. Because I wanna build a trusting relationship, and that is that right there. I said, oh my gosh, you know. You know, I hope we can remedy that. So today, we're able to have some progress with that. Talking with, with Kyle up at the SAU, who's a fantastic problem solver. So we'll continue to figure out how we can solve that in some way that works. But that's the technical part of it. But as far as kind of philosophically around a one, two, three, four, I think, again, we'll have an open, like, an evening where we can go into depth on that. Let's see, teachers share, look at some examples. We can talk through some things that might help parents fully understand that. When they go to Winnetka High School, which is one of the concerns, Winnetka does what's called a hybrid model, so they have students have a one, two, three, four. They also have a percent grade. But that's unique to the high school. But, but all the middle schools sending into the high school are all using competency grades. This is a New Hampshire initiative. This is something that's across the state of New Hampshire. So it's, it's a bigger conversation around, how do we, how do we give students feedback in such a way that they can keep reaching to mastery? It's more with your competency grading, it's more about students getting feedback and reaching mastery than it is about a math problem. A seventy-two plus a seventy-eight, I've done it, did it for many, many years. And it, it didn't accurately reflect what the student was able to do for what they do.
I think if we can readdress some of it to make it clear for the parents, because, you know, you said, I get, I get a three. And a four, if you have a C minus, you're like, okay, let's get you up to a, a C plus to a B next time. That three and that two has such a wide range that when I get it, and I, it's like someone's reading out a two, like, okay.
But it's also opinionated. It could be what one teacher feels like, well, that's probably a two, another teacher could be like, well, you know, I kinda feel like it's a three, so I feel it to be transparent. So the parents know exactly where their kids stand. Because there are teachers that are more lenient than others, there's other teachers that feel like, that know this student more on this subject, so why not go to the grades?
But isn't that also subjective? So they are separated differently? And I, just one of those.
Because a score is a score. If they get an eighty-seven, it's a, there's, there's a scale between an eighty-seven to whatever an eighty-two is.
But not if I give, not if I give a test that's easier than the test that Lacy gets.
That's true. I mean, that's true.
Yeah, so there's variabilities in both things. And I think what's underlying what your comments are really, what I'm hearing from them, is that parents really wanna understand whether or not their students
Where they are in that school.
Are growing and reaching their potential. And how that child compares to maybe their grade level cohort, right? And so we look at that, yeah, the grade level expectations. So we look at that all different ways, which is why the report card is not the only way that parents get information from us from the school. We also mail home the NEEW results, and you also get the SAS results in the spring as far as parent communication goes. Teachers is using constant formative assessments, we call them. They're like daily, weekly, and then they have summatives, and they go through that with feedback cycles and so on. But for parents, we have those other methods so that when you're looking at your NEEW scores, that's where we're looking at students compared to students that they're, you know, students across, this is a national norm, students across their age level, where they would perform their grade level, and also on the NEEW is their growth. The student's growth compared to other students' growth. So that's one way. Then we have the spring, we have SAS, and that's, that's a New Hampshire, you know, that's them compared across the state of New Hampshire with their grade level. And inside each one of those test assessments, teachers can drill down inside of those and see specific strengths and weaknesses and gaps for kids. So there's, we never look at a student just one way. And, and if you ever have a question, a concern, and any parent listening tonight, there's multiple ways to get information. You can reach out directly to the teachers. You can, you can absolutely reach out to me and have a sit-down and have a conversation in more depth. And you can reach out to principals and anyone else that works with your child. Because that's the work we do. This is what we're well versed in.
So I think that's what's frustrating though, is when you jump in, and they can't do the work.
Yes.
And you do reach out to the teacher.
Okay.
And you're told they're doing great.
Right.
I mean, and, and it's not, I'm not just speaking for myself. I mean, if that's the case and that, that the Power School with the letters in there weren't accurate, that's one thing.
Right.
But a three and a four, he should still know how to do the math, and he can't.
Absolutely. So if you're looking at, when
I'm not surprised he got a D. Like, I wasn't upset that I thought
Yeah.
he should've got a B and he got a D.
Right.
I wasn't surprised at the D.
Right.
But I know, but he's not a B either. He can't even work. So he's got a three or a four.
So, so when you're looking at, so when you're looking, and I So, so when you're looking at, so when you're looking, and I know there's a frustration there. I mean, I have two kids I raised too and get this through with them and teachers and assignments and moments where they were really doing well and other times where they really struggled. And, and it's, as you watch, as you parent your own child going through, you see highs and lows. Because learning isn't just a straight shot from A to A, you know, it's just an upward progression for students. There's times they struggle and that's when we lean on, you know, our educators and, and reach out. But again, if you're, if you're wondering about what, where your child is in terms of their skills, the one, two, three, fours are matched up to specific skills in math. So they could have a four in number sense, which they could exceed that in number sense, but then they could have a one when it comes to some other part of math, say it's fractions. I'm just, I'm just grabbing at stuff, yeah, linear equations. And that to the teacher, the math teacher goes, huh, I wonder why.
Yeah, but I mean, in addition to having a letter grade, that would be amazing.
But the letter grade doesn't tell, I, and I don't wanna go back and forth about that, that, unless I, you know, unless we have
So if we could have a presentation to kind of wrap up tonight, and we could have something that way for parents like ourselves that, you know, we need to understand.
So I'm hearing you want more information, we'll set up an evening.
A way that we can more target how our children do, whether, whether it's like a three, whether it's like a three point two five or three points like.
And look at exemplars, like what is a, what's the seventh grade three, right? And that's some of the stuff. Does that answer some of it?
Yes, okay, I appreciate that.
And I'll let you know when we're gonna have that night.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
Thank you, oh, so much, thank you.
Okay, and Gary, please thank you for having us on the agenda. I, I, you know, we're all the mindset sometimes that less is more, but I think with the situation that we're in at our schools, that in addition to the one, two, three, four, um, I did look, I saw the grades, I was like, wow, amazing. And, you know, it is, it, it is tough though when you see a three or a four and you see the grade underneath would be a B or an A and sometimes a B. Um, you know, you, it's like, wow. So I think, just as well as the comments, I think just as important, you have the numbers, you can incorporate the letter grades and you have the comments. So I think with everything going on, whatever we can do to educate, um, the parents, the community more to, um, know how good kids are doing, because I know if I see a D, you know, I'll just say, wow, we need improvement. But if I see a D, but the three is because it meant certain benchmarks, but really don't understand the whole concept, then that's in the eye of the beholder's eye number, um, right? That a grade is missing in more of an indicator of who, you know, what was the test score? Out of the, out of the whole number, whether they turned it in, it's just something we can do to help. So I think having, um, all of those incorporated and talking about it is wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Next?
Next.
Reset room? Is this what we talked about before, is this the planning room?
Yeah, I think we touched, we touched on it last night.
Educational consultant Maria, you wanna talk about that? The reset room is off the table, I'm assuming, because we just did the handbook.
Oh, okay. So Kelly, the reset room's on, too, we did the handbook, but that's something that has a goal to accomplish but to, um, to help one to enhance the kids' better health, along with that in the middle school.
No kids on the desk.
That's one, that's elementary.
And now I'm talking about middle school.
No one has phoned the desk in the middle school, Maria, so.
Elementary school happened last year.
Yeah.
I need to. Two kids.
I, I could speak to it.
That if, um, if for instance, there are those distractions in the classroom and the teacher is hoping to leave and send to the office one, two, three, four times during that period and they end up in a mouthful, actually their child's been, I was looking for some area that will help, like a zone or room, and you don't have a hall or a recital, whatever it's called. And I know in class we did have a cleaning room, um, our name was Mrs. Doyle. Um, there was homework done in there, there was academic done in there and instead of sending a kid home for three or four days, they were able to work in that room and do their work and get back with the teacher, connect back with the classroom. Now, I'm not saying this for this all, but I'm saying it certainly at the elementary end in that little zone room, there is still reason why the middle schoolers, you know, are wrong about that and that's all I'm saying.
I think going into the, into this new school year with the two, the principals in place, with all of our new assistant principals, like let's, we have put in, everyone has put in a metric ton of work to try to make things different than it was last year. We've got the handbook, we've got the new people in place, let's, let's open school and let's see how our administrators that we've pretty much handpicked at this point perform and how they handle that disciplinary issue. Again, we can always go back and readdress and see, see what happens, but let's go into this with like giving, the building principles, the confidence that like, we, we've, we've told you guys stuff for a year now, plus a million times over the summer, like I think it's been loud and clear, like let's go and give you guys the tools to do it. And if there are issues and people keep coming above the board and saying like, hey, we have a million different discipline issues and we all have to sit down and discuss what the next option is. I don't say, I'm not saying that this is off the table, I'm just saying for today, like, we're going to the school in two weeks. I've got, I have full confidence in Tim and his team and Colleen and her team, let's give them the tools and let's see what they do and how they handle opening day.
This is deja vu of last year.
What's that?
I thought this is deja vu of last year because we said the same thing last year.
Well, we've made, we've made far more change, we've made far more changes this year going in and I am ready to see what this new school year brings. Like I can't go back now, we have to let them do what they've done. We've got the handbooks, we've got the policies, and we, they know that we're watching that. Like it's like not unheard, like not unheard of right now. So let's go into the school year and let's, uh, hopefully we don't have the disciplinary issues because they're handling them at the, the vice principal and the principal level before things get, you know, out of hand, so. That's my opinion on that.
It's good to hear you say that Patrick, that I would more, because we really have to change things up and it's been time consuming. I like to hear you say that, but I also wanna say, maybe we can do a monthly update because Les Shepard back in the day, I know you don't like to go backwards, but he used to bring a report monthly to the door of infractions and it was really helpful for us and helpful for them, so that we knew what we're dealing with and whatever we can do to help. So I think maybe I'm not good report on that, you can vote that, you know, from elementary and middle school. So we keep a close eye on that and make sure that, you know, is there anything more we can do to support, um, moving forward.
Yeah, so I, I believe, I believe, um, that we have, at the last couple.
Well, I mean, I think, I think what Maria's point is, is that a lot of things that have come to us at the end of the year
that we should've known throughout the year that we didn't, that were like catastrophes or huge issues.
Can you like give me a specific on that, because it's really, it's.
It's upsetting to you, I can see that in your face.
I'm referring to exiting interviews.
What I feel like we've worked really hard and you'll forgive me, to make progress.
Colleen, it's not personal and who says it has nothing to do with you? The exiting interviews, we can't talk about it and it has.
And I don't want you.
Go ahead, go ahead, I want you to tell me how you feel.
When you say. I gotta reset, yeah.
It's okay, reset.
When you say, we keep talking about this, we haven't made progress, uh, I personalize it as the leader of the school because I feel like we've worked really hard to make progress on behalf of kids. I'm sorry if I'm getting emotional, but I suspended more kids in the month of October, nineteen, who literally, every kid who came across my door and I told myself I wasn't gonna get emotional about this or I'm like mad at myself right now. I addressed it, Mike addressed it, suspended them, sent them all.
Colleen, it's not even what I was talking about.
Okay, well, but I wanna, I feel like you're talking about the middle school and I don't have a chance to, like.
Yeah, I was talking about the staff that sat here and cried in front of us and we all sat here crying for them. It has nothing to.
About us, the middle school, or about the kids?
No, well, there was.
Because I'm running, I'm running the middle school with those wonderful people.
Yep, these wonderful people that are sitting here, but you didn't talk with the wonderful people that left who literally were in tears to the point where they, we cried with them. We can't discuss those things with you, but it is very, it is very frustrating when everyone is always talking how happy they are with administration and meanwhile, we know of administration that walked out the door and it's not you, Colleen. It's not you, the complaints were never about you, they weren't about the principals. They weren't, and I'm being honest with you, they weren't about the teachers and they weren't there about the principals. The, the exiting interviews we had, I'm sorry, there wasn't one person that did not sit here with a, maybe one person who had a dry eye on maybe one or two of them. But when they left the room and one of them was recorded, so, but when I tell you that it's not personal to you, it's that when you come to us and you tell us stuff, I believe what you say to me.
I am one hundred percent.
But when you walk out that door, you don't always have control of what happens. And, and I, that's, I can't get any deeper than that, okay?
Yeah, I think we're pretty clear in that, and we.
I am very clear and I'm very clear.
And you're insinuating that is me, and again, I would suggest that if the board has concerns about my performance.
Meredith, there were exiting interviews.
Kelly, I would suggest that if the board has concerns about my performance, that they do an investigation. That's how you handle disciplinary concerns or behavior or performance concerns.
Do you understand?
Because, because Colleen got upset and I don't want her to get upset, because I don't want her to think it's on her.
Because I feel like we have worked really hard.
You are, and no one's taking that away from you.
And every kid was, I could tell you how much times, the teachers.
What did you say, Mary?
The EAs.
I just don't like seeing her get upset.
And I don't want to see her get upset either.
Mike, myself, Ben.
But I think at the beginning of the meeting, I pointed out the issue. But nobody wants to see what's going on.
The principal has the hardest job in education. And they feel responsible for everything that goes on, is on your shoulder. It's, I'm sorry.
No, so you know what, Mary, you put out a good point, because somebody came to me as a teacher and said, and I'm, I'm saying this because this is how I feel, they came to me as a teacher and they said to me that they got upset during a board meeting because they felt that they, um, that they maybe weren't appreciated. And I said, I know how you feel, and I said, I mean, I don't know how to say this to you any different, but I don't think that they're referring to a particular teacher, I think they're just saying in general. And they said, but it hurts my feelings.
It's hard not to personalize.
Right.
Because the principal feels the responsibility of everything that goes on. It's the hardest job in education, I can tell you that from having done it for seventeen years. Colleen did it for a number of years before this, we know what the job entails and we take it. The reason why Colleen was able to get the results that she did and I was able to get the results that I did in our districts was because we took it personally.
Yeah.
We, we want to support those people, that's what we wanna do. And we wanna be on the same page with all of you, we need you as partners. But please trust that these people know what they're doing, they really do. Give them, just give them the runway, a little bit, hold them accountable and give them the runway.
One second, one second. So, so I'm, I'm gonna bring back to what you said, and when that teacher said that to me, I said, you know what, I know how you feel. Because as a school board member, when you sat there for four years and there's a lot of things that you know that you cannot talk about and you know a lot of things that you're wondering, no wonder, if I wasn't on those, if I wasn't behind closed doors and knew what I knew and I was sitting where he is, I'd be saying the same thing, I'd be saying, how can these board members turn this down? How can this board member be questioning this? How can this board member question what these teachers or the staff are saying? I would be saying the same thing, because you know what? I worked at a place where I wasn't privy to the information behind the door and I made that judgment. And now that I work at that place where I know what goes behind the closed doors, I, I apologize every day to those people that I say, I'm so sorry that I judged you and that I thought that you were doing the wrong thing when I wasn't privy to what I am now and I know what's really going on. So my point is, is that there's board members on this board that have literally sat here and been accused of being disgusting, being the reason the taxpayers were voted down, on and on and on, when they were new board members. So when they walked out that door and they were called those mean and nasty names, they were called those nasty names because of me being on the board four years, not that. So I know how they feel. But I also made the same decisions that I did in the last four years because I was privy to information that I haven't. And the reason I sit here now and what appears to be is negative, when it's not, what it really is, is mistrust, is based on one hundred percent the information that we've been privy to this year as a board with exiting interviews that we had no information on in the last three years. That is why I will not give an inch, because it gets taken as fifteen miles. I have been that person to say, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, I know this is what's going on, why am I not going with my gut? And then I had the people sit in front of me and they confirmed every single thing I knew and I felt terrible when they walked out that door because I knew the whole time it was going on and I just ignored it.
I'd like to put a positive spin back on this.
Go ahead, Patrick, because you, you don't wanna be realistic and I understand that, but these teachers that have left, it would hurt.
I'm allowed to have all of my own opinions here and just like, just like you're allowed to say what you want, we're going into a new school year, I have trust in the people that we've worked hard to put in there. Like, we don't have to go down the rabbit hole of a million different things that have happened. Like, put your faith and confidence in the people we handpicked to run the school. Like, let's not go into this diving directly into a mud puddle thinking that the school year is already roomed with disciplinary issues when we have new, brand new people in the positions. Like, we would just went from reset room to educational consultant to a whole bunch of other stuff. We got a couple more policies, there are a couple more things to get through, let's go into the school.
Hurry up, get out of here.
Let's go into the school year.
It's nobody's fault, Patrick.
It's about getting things accomplished.
It's about getting out of here.
It's about telling people that we have confidence in them.
Kelly, when you ease down, I'll play speed.
I, I think, I think the message that I wish was being delivered is that it's not chaotic here at Seabrook Middle School, that kids fight, we have problems and we address them. And that's kind of the narrative I'd like people to hear. Like any other middle school, we're in the middle school for a long time. And what's upsetting is like, oh my god, Seabrook Middle School is crazy there. We have crazy moments, we have kids that are out of control, it's not crazy. I invite you to come in any day and see, kids are dysregulated, we address it, teachers address it. We have lots of other things that we've put in our school plan to address it for next year. So you have to trust, and I told you that months ago. I'm gonna take care of business, Josh will take care of business, teachers take care of business, we do what we do on behalf of kids. So when kids hear what other people think of them here, that's just heartening.
I've heard that from students, Colleen. From yours, from your, from this building.
I've heard students complain too that they can't learn because of behaviors.
I, I'm not disagreeing with that, nor, nor is Colleen.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Kelly, I'm there, we do that.
Sure, yeah, I think that's not wrong.
Okay, I just wanna go back, um, Patrick, to you particularly. As a board member, um, we all have our own opinions and things that we like to bring to the table. And everything that the board members have brought to the agenda and the table has brought good discussion. And I don't want to confuse trust with caring enough to want to support and give extra support where we need it, whether it was a reset room, whether it was a zone room. I want the board to feel free and open at any time to chime in with opinions and things they might think would help. And I want our administration to be able to converse back and forth with us comfortably, no matter what the conversation is, we're not here at all to sit and say nothing. People didn't elect us to do that, they didn't elect us to sit in chair and say, I'm here and okay, I'm leaving. Lacy wore a pattern and stuff, Kelly wore a pattern and stuff. I brought forth a few things that I've heard over the last five or six years that I've been concerned and in fact have heard from you specifically on the worries of class disruption and kids not being able to learn. So I thought, you know what, maybe we need to go back to that room. Do we? I don't know. And so it's just on the table for conversation and it shouldn't be that it's pointing the finger at anybody because at the end of the day, whatever happens in that building with administration and staff, guess who's left upset? Yours and mine, Patrick, at the end of the day. So we're responsible and I just wanna know that we can work openly, whatever it is we wanna discuss. And I wanna hear it, I don't keep having good discussions and thank you guys. I don't keep having good discussions. And thank you, guys.
Cell phone use?
Educational consultant.
Educational consultant, Maria, that's you.
Yep. So that's some time ago, narrative had suggested a consultant and, um.
No, I think you suggested it at the March meeting.
We've talked about it during, you know, the election process and then, you know, the area that our school's in. And now we've heard from a member of the public that we've seen great, um, jumps in achievement. As a board member, I haven't seen or heard that yet, so I'm extremely excited. But at the same time, I wanted to just bring that out because if we have a school, which we do, with kids that are struggling and then kids that are really, really smart, that are wanting to reach and we can do anything to help all of them on any end as a team, all put together. If we feel as a board and as administrators that we do need an outside consultant to come in and help us, it's not a bad thing. But I think it's something, again, it's open to conversation. Maybe we can revisit it in a month or two and see how things are going. But it's just a conversation piece and I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Uh, privacy concerns and transparency.
I already addressed that at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Um, cell phone use, um, I brought this up and we talked about it last night in the retreat. It is in the, um, handbooks. And I think we can move forward with, with that plan for cell phone usage.
Given all this.
Um, and then, um, SES logo.
I make a motion and change the logo. What's that?
What, what, Lacy, what about the cell phone use, did you say?
So I said, I put this, I asked for this to be on the agenda, um, a while ago. We talked about it last night in our retreat. I had, um, reached out to Colleen when I, um, saw her first draft of the handbook and she responded back to me, um, and we talked about it last night at the retreat. They have a great plan for cell phone usage. It's, um, basically at the discretion of the teachers. They have what they call parking lots. So they have areas in, um, each classroom where children can put their cell phones so that they're not a distraction during class. And I thought that Colleen's, um, presentation was great and so I don't think that we need to discuss it any further.
I just wanna clar, I just wanna clarify that really quickly. So, uh, cause that's great. So we said the parking lots were gonna be a hard rule, uh, in, in the classrooms. Um, because the, the, the students are one-on-one technology anyway. They have their Chromebooks.
Sorry.
And so, no, no, that's totally okay. I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure, cause Colleen and I talked about that. We've been laboring that point, but we were going back and forth because kids wanna be on their phones. They're kids. They wanna be on, all the time. You, you know, you know.
Oh, all the time.
And we're dealing with all the issues that, that, you know, that, that brings, which, you know, doom scrolling and other things, right? So with that being said, we said, you know, in the classrooms during that time, they're in the parking lot and teachers will have to come up with a system on their own to figure out how they do that. We have a suggestion for them to label all those centers with names, et cetera. But, but that's, that's hard and fast. Um, and, and so we're, we're.
Everybody parks their phone in a parking lot.
Everybody.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone has a parking lot.
Everybody has a parking lot as well.
She bought one, she thinks.
That's the back of the.
That's what they are.
Yeah.
No, and I appreciate you guys coming up with an solution. But also I know, I know, I need a parking lot at my.
She knows about shoes.
I don't buy shoes.
She knows about shoes.
They're all in shoes, right?
Yeah.
Got her on the shoe.
I got my. I got a shoe.
So I guess it's sort of like that. We'll see how it reacts for the year and then we'll, we'll change it if we need to.
Thank you. Perfect.
All right. All right, SES logo. So I asked, have this put back on, have this put on because I was, as well as others, were a little disappointed that the SES logo changed to a wave when it's been the Rams for years. So I just didn't know what the board thought about making, I'll make a motion that the wave logo, it looks like Tim already did change it on.
Tim did change it.
He did change it on the handbook.
I was gonna say, cause, um.
Oh, he did.
Okay.
If you see it though at other places, knowing that it's, if it's put on things that I may not have created, just let me know and I can get it taken off, like if it's on the website or on Facebook, that, if you see it, let me know. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's just gonna take time. Can we discuss why? Why we're changing it?
Yes, so did you make a motion?
Um, not yet. Somebody wants to know why we're changing it. Because it's.
The name, why?
The logo.
Changing to Rams, putting it back to the Rams, which it was prior.
It should have, it was never brought to, correct?
Well, it was brought to the board, but it was not. Hmm, how do I say this?
It was not approved, right?
It wasn't a quick, it was a quick discussion of, here's the handbook and it looks like we changed the logo and it just, you know what I mean? One of those conversations where it went really quick and you really didn't pay attention.
Yep, so I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward and I know as Tim's already made some of the changes, um, to use our Ram logo to be on the Rams, um, moving forward wherever every wave is, if we can, just for example.
Because the, the.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
Already has the Rams.
Yeah, you have to change it.
I know.
Apparently has a.
Why would it be two separate? I'd just say the board asked for that in April. We were told by administration at that time that they were making those changes. I believe everything Tim has done has been updated with those changes.
Just not the website, but.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Like the middle school is still the Rams, but elementary is not.
Right, so do we have a motion in a second?
We don't need, I don't think we need a motion at all.
We, I don't think we need one. We're already doing it.
Change, just wanna change it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Um.
I just wanna bring up something real quick before you, I know we're, everybody wants to go home, um, but I just wanted, because we talked a lot about board goals last night and I kinda volunteered to be the one to draft some up. So I drafted quickly, um, last night, seven of them that I gave to the board. Um, and so I think we should, should take, pick three and then present them at, um, the September meeting. And, uh, but I just wanted to give you guys, uh, to clarify that because I know that was a big thing of, you know, the school board should have updated goals. Um, and so I gave seven to choose from and they can tweak them and, and stuff.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Lacy, for doing that.
Yep.
Lacy, who will pick the three?
Um, I think collectively or the board.
Collectively.
No, but these are the school board goals, so not the mission statement.
Cause I'm hearing you take people review them and then at the net, you'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to choose.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. But I just threw lunch out there. Maria, you did receive that email?
Yes, yeah, I will.
Okay.
Because the number seven, nine, seven.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, I've got a paper copy too. All right, personnel.
Yeah, we have.
Do we have non-public?
Yeah.
Future. Do it up. All right, so, um, motion for a roll call to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one dash A three. Um, what, a receipt?
Two C.
Two C, um, at seven thirty-one PM. I'll second. Was seven thirty-one PM.
Yes, and roll call, Lacy, yes.
Roll call, Lacy. Lacy, Jen, second?
Yes. Roll call, Will, did Lacy?
Jen, yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Maria? And Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in non-public, Mary.
So fine, okay. May I read? Motion to end the non-public session and resume the public meeting at?
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five P.M. Who's making that motion? Patrick. And second?
I did.
Jen, thank you Jen. Uh, Lacey?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick? Maria?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yeah. With regrets.
This is to come on and not come off.
Do you want to still with regrets?
Yeah.
No. All right. So, there's a motion on the table to...
Okay, so... Do you want to breathfully need this motion to deny, uh, the appeal?
Second.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask a question? If we, if we make a mo, if we agree to deny, and they file a grievance, do we ever get a chance with the union to sit alone and explain the situation? Because I think that's what we should be doing at this point anyway.
This is not a grievance matter.
I know that, I'm asking a question. If there, I, I, I am having, I'm struggling because I'm having a hard time giving an answer because I feel like that they deserve an explanation.
This is one stamp, it can be grieved after this.
I don't like denying their, I don't like to deny their motion, I don't like denying their appeal.
It's the union saying it's not grievable.
I don't like to deny it.
I do want to thank these teachers and, and we appreciate you and this is, this is, um, I think this is a denial out of necessity versus not, we heard you and, and we understand and we appreciate you, um, but this is just out of necessity.
And I, and I'm gonna voice and say where we are tonight is not where we need it to be, and I will vote no on that motion.
Okay, we're not there yet, Maria, Maria, can you please wait, we're not there at the, yeah, I need to make sure everybody has whatever they said. We'll go to the motion.
It's a roll call vote.
Get him roll call.
Yeah, but you can't talk about how you vote now, give it first and a second.
Part of the discussion, it's part of the discussion, but not part of the record yet.
Nope, you can.
So that, that's what I was saying, that, um, I do believe that this was preventable, and I'm gonna say that on the great.
I agree.
Yes.
So we have a motion to deny the reassignment appeal made by Lacey, um, second by Patrick. Lacey?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
No.
Kelly?
No.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
At, uh, eight thirty-eight. Eight thirty-eight P.M., um, Maria's gonna second. Lacey? Roll.
Oh yeah, we did say we have a public comment.
No, sorry, but, um...
She's saying, okay.
Okay.
Um, yes, Lacey, yes. Jen?
Yes.
I don't.
Patrick?
Yes.
Maria?
Yeah.
And Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for helping me out when I was...
You're welcome, Maria.